Item four on the agenda is approval of payroll and vendor warrants.
Make a motion to approve the current payroll and vendor warrants.
Second.
Motion made second, any further discussion, seeing none holds in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
unanimous. Item five is citizen speak, would anybody like to address the board? Cheryl, why don't you come up first?
Hi, everyone. How are you? I have a little stay on task because you know I am a talker, so. So, good evening, thanks for having citizens speak. I'm here tonight as a citizen of the town of Milton, a town meeting member, and a member of the current PTO leadership team at the Pierce Middle School, and also as a former co-chair of both Yes For Milton and Invest In Milton, the past two override campaigns in this town. My topic of concern is the current contract negotiations with our chief of police, Richard Wells. I strongly urge and appeal to all of you to allow the chief to keep his current salary and allow him to stay on for one additional year. I wanted to share my past experiences with Chief Wells over his tenure as chief of police in this town. In my role of PTO leadership in the elementary schools and now at Pierce, I can't say enough of how much Chief Wells and his team have been available to our students, our parents, and our schools as a whole, whether it has been on school safety or advocating and assisting in the education of both parents and students with regard to risky youth behavior. His door is always open, he returns phone calls and emails and all forms of communication in record time. He speaks at the Pierce Middle School PTO every year to the parents on what to be aware of as kids are entering their teenage years with regard to drinking, drugs, and overall hazardous behavior patterns that can start to occur at this age. He gives parents informative and straightforward advice on how to best communicate with their kids on these issues. For the past several years, it is our most well-attended parent PTO meeting of the year at Pierce Middle School, which Dr. Spalding doesn't always like, that he gets better attendance than her, but it shows you how important the meeting is, how valuable the parent community feels, the information that he gives to us. He also ensures his school resource officers are always on alert for kids, as they, on alert for kids they feel might be going down a dangerous path, and has them work with the Pierce administrators to try to get at-risk kids on the road to success. The administration, both administrations, the middle and the high school, work very closely with those resource officers, and when he was speaking at Pierce last week, he mentioned of the close communication that they all have, and Dr. Spalding also spoke about the immense success that community policing action has been in the school systems. And as somebody who had worked in other places before coming to both Cunningham and Pierce, she wanted to make note that it doesn't happen everywhere, so that's a great sign of it. There are just two wonderful examples of the strong, as I said, community policing Chief Wells exemplifies to the school community as well as to the Milton community as a whole. I also wanted to note what a great communicator Chief Wells was to me, as well as my co-chairs for the Invest In Milton override campaign. As you all know, educating the masses of the town on what Proposition Two and a Half is, since it passed in 1979, is not an easy endeavor. Reaching out to citizens to ask them to raise their taxes is a difficult task, but the chief was always available to our team to explain what the budget cuts would do to the policing and the overall safety of our town, and allowed us to educate the town in what I would label as layman's terms, which is very important when you're educating a town of this nature. His availability and strong communication skills allowed us to be successful in our message to the town on the policing and safety issues, and I will be forever grateful for his cooperation and continuing to keep Milton strong, safe, and moving forward. Lastly, as we move forward to another possible override year this spring, and as I stated as being a former chair of these last two campaigns, I can't express enough my concern that there is overt, visible discontent between the leadership on this issue in this town. I feel it will be extremely, extremely hard to unify and appeal to this town and ask them to raise their taxes when there is potential political infighting and possible lawsuits, which would be very, very costly to the town, while occurring in the background. I ask you to please reconsider and do the right thing of keeping Chief Wells on for a final year at his current salary. It is truly the best thing for the safety of the town, the financial well-being of the town, and the overall welfare of the town. In closing, I'd like to thank you all for your service to the Board of Selectmen, as well as your consideration and cooperation with regard to this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Anybody else want to address the board? Yes.
Hi, Suzanne Brown, 566 Adams Street. I've gone to the police chief regarding the matter, he sent me to the Board of Health, and now the Board of Health sent me to you. In the town, residential trash pickup can't start until seven o'clock in the morning, yet there is no regulation for commercial. I was woken up this morning at 4:30 in the morning, the dumpster was being picked up from Stella's. Santander Bank was at 4:30, and Starbucks is anywhere between four and six. And now, where, who do I have to go to in order to make a regulation because it's unfair?
Thanks. Anybody else? Okay, and we'll move on. Okay, item six on the agenda is a public hearing on the Novara sign request. I think we have attorney Marion McGettrick here, and Vance, I don't know if Vance is coming up to the table also, or?
Yes. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening, Marion. I'm Marion McGettrick, and I did bring Andy Layman, who is from the Sign Design Company, and Steve Tedesco, who is the designer for the restaurant.
Okay.
Because the sign application is part of the overall restaurant design, we thought we might be able to fill in with some details. This, you have a letter in front of you, which explains generally what the nature of the relief we're requesting is. We need relief for three different aspects of these signs. The restaurant is a corner location, and it has an entrance on a parking lot, and it has an entrance on Adams Street. So, this restaurant requests two signs, not one. The bylaw only allows one sign. The side sign, which faces the parking lot, at the proposed size, and both signs have been proposed to be the same size, six feet nine inches by four feet two inches, is well within any size limitation for the facade, and that's how we set our size determination for signs on commercial buildings. The sign in the front exceeds the sign limitations because the front is just a storefront and a narrow entry that leads into the large area that's actually the restaurant. And so, when you take the same sign design and put it in the front, it definitely exceeds the normal allowed area. In addition, each sign, each of the two signs, has externally, external lighting, gooseneck lighting. Any kind of lighting in a sign requires relief from the Board of Appeals, it's not allowed by our bylaw. So, we have three forms of relief we're requesting. We need two signs rather than one. Novara requires, well, we'd certainly like to have external lighting because you have to be able to see the sign at night. And then finally, the front sign exceeds the size limitations that would normally be allowed for a sign in that location. So, we've met with the Sign Review Committee, and John Zickowitz from the Sign Review Committee has sent a very thoughtful, detailed letter evaluating the sign application and stating two preferences from the Sign Review Committee. The first preference, and Mr. Zickowitz is here, and he may want to elaborate, would be to somewhat reduce the size of the sign in front, and the second option, which is the option we would strongly request that you adopt, would be not to reduce the size of the sign, but to move the sign down and to move the lighting down so that it fits better within the facade. This is what you are looking at here. We've taken the original design, moved it down as requested, moved the lighting so that it's inside that square area. And it looks good to me, but I'm not a designer, and the Board of Selectmen will have their own opinion, I'm sure. They, you know, I do want to point out, the facade of this storefront is not the same as the facade in the other storefronts, because it's higher, it used to be a theater.
Right.
And this is the original facade. The design of the sign is, it's intended, it's the logo for the restaurant, it's used on everything, and it's used with these proportions, which is why we would very much like to see the same design used on each sign. It's supposed to be, it's supposed to be the size of a movie screen.
Well, it's a throwback to the old movie screen. It's silver, it's a throwback to the silver screen with a piece of film on it, so that's where that came from.
So, the proportions come from the movie screen, the depiction is of a piece of film, so that's the idea behind the logo, and the silver, which happily the Sign Review Committee did not object to the color, but the silver is just something that looks good against the background. So, the sign company is responsible for the mechanics of producing the sign, and for telling you whether it's possible to do what you might want, which is why Andy Layman is here tonight to talk to you. And I asked Steve Tedesco to be here in case you had general questions about the design, and he may be able to elaborate if you'd like. We have, you know, 1930's pictures of Adams Street and East Milton Square showing the big movie facade which jutted out from the building.
Right.
Certainly was large, but the whole street looks different now. There's a picture like this up in the restaurant, so if you're interested, you might like to take a look at this.
That's the old, that's the old marquee.
You should be able to pick out the marquee.
That picture was taken approximately in 1933.
I don't know if there's anything you want to add about the design, or?
Well, again, you know, it was specifically designed to, as a throwback to the old movie screen. That was in the original theater, and also, you know, the color came from the silver screen, and, you know, with the image of the film strip on it. And also, you know, we did take into consideration the facade, you know, to fit it into the original, where the original marquee was, and as you can see in that photograph. And again, you know, it's the logo, it's the logo that was designed for Novara, it's on the gift cards, it's on the menu, it's on the business cards, it's everywhere. So, that's where the proportions came from, and then it turned into a sign. And then, the only difference is, is that it's from the original logo that it's tilted, you can see in that section there with the straight goosenecks, and that gives it the movie screen look from the, from the street.
Is it similar in size to the temporary sign that's in there now, or is it?
Yes, it is.
And how much larger is that than the sign, than appropriate, well, I shouldn't say appropriate, but how much larger is it?
The sign that would be allowed would be six feet by nine inch, six feet nine inches square or something, I mean, it's extremely small.
Six foot, four.
It's extremely small.
Like a two foot by three foot sign.
Yeah.
Okay, and this is how they?
What's that?
This is twenty, this is...
That's four foot two by six foot nine.
Yeah.
So, that's fifty inches.
And two by three would be approximately?
That's what they would allow, based on the square.
Which you wouldn't be able to see at all.
Yeah, based on the, I think they did the storefront, the length of the storefront.
That's about double, level and double, would?
You know, the Sign Review Committee isn't suggesting that we go down to that size, it's just that, you know, we think this looks good and fits in, and so we'd be asking you not to reduce the size of the sign, but we would agree that the recommendation of the Sign Review Committee to change the position of the sign and to change the location of the lighting is a good one, and we've already incorporated in the design here so that you can see what it would look like.
So, with the relocation of the sign and the lighting the way it is, it looks like there isn't, there won't be any splash over the way those are designed, it'll just be basically just right on it, and that's it, so it won't really extend to any other perimeter.
It's just a light wash.
Right.
It's directed right to the sign.
It can be angled too, whatever, you know, direct the light, it has a little bit of a shield on it, so it's not going to go out into the street and stuff.
We have, we have, there is existing downlighting in the vestibule, where you can see the entrance there, so that gives us adequate light for the entrance, so any light that would come off of that would just be ambient light that would bounce in.
If there was any spill at all, it would be just going towards Santander Bank anyways, right? That's what's right across the street.
All the other signs are all externally lit too.
Right.
I think that lowering the sign, make it align with the other two signs, does look better than the design that we received initially, that, just the lighting at the top looks better.
I think the straight goosenecks look better too, they look much better.
Does that leave what the Sign Review Committee thought would be about 12 inches at the top?
Yes.
I think that that's an enhancement the way it is right now, the way you've changed it, I definitely do. Okay, and then we also have a rear sign as well?
Excuse me?
We also have a sign in the rear of the building as well?
Yes.
It's the same size.
It's the same size, but certainly does look different on a really wide facade, it's much smaller looking.
And the sign?
It also has external lighting, also we need approval of that.
The same gooseneck lighting. Now, it won't impact any of the neighbors on the other side of the street or anything like that, right?
The lighting shines back onto the sign.
Right.
I don't think the lights are, they're not up yet in the parking lot, they're all going to be shielded, so that's a requirement.
Right, I can see that, that's great.
The intent of the, again, the intent was just to give it a wash of light.
Sure, that makes a lot of sense, yeah.
To need to be seen from, you know, ten feet, spine.
And did we reach out to the butters on?
Yes, we did.
Okay. I don't know if there are any butters here that want to say anything about the sign? Guess not. Okay, I mean, I don't have, personally, I don't have any problem with it.
I don't either, I think you guys did a good job.
My only concern is that we watched the rear one just to make sure there is no light spill, because that, that one definitely is pointing at least towards residential neighborhood.
And because the lights are directional, they can be adjusted, and we would want to know about it if there was an issue like that. We'd certainly probably see it ourselves.
John Zickowitz has raised, why don't you come on up, John, because otherwise nobody's going to be able to hear you.
Cheryl's here too.
Okay.
Hello, John Zickowitz from the Sign Review Committee. We also had a comment on the color temperature on the lighting so that it matches the storefronts on either side, so I don't know how that's going to be accomplished.
Well, we specified a 2700K lamp, which is a warmer white.
Could someone check with what the lights are on?
I could easily check, I mean, those were installed by Falcone Properties, but I could easily check with the, you know, with the color temperature was on those lamps.
Right, I think it should all match up.
Yeah, would probably match up.
Yeah, one should be brighter and one cooler.
No, these pictures come in all temperatures.
Right, I know, that's why we, that's why we put that in our recommendations.
I only specified 2700K, because it's more of an incandescent light, it's warmer than these bright white LEDs, which can be a problem.
Yeah, I just think the whole storefront should all match up lighting-wise.
That makes sense.
John, is this redesign, moving the bottom of the sign down?
Yeah, that's what we suggested, that was one of the suggestions was, yes, yeah, if you didn't change the size, was to drop it and then do the different lighting so that it visually looks smaller even though it isn't, and it fits now within that opening, which it didn't before.
Yep. That's great. Okay, Cheryl, do you have any?
I think my question, my statement has more to do with the lighting in the back, you made a comment about spill over from the rear sign.
Mm-hmm.
The rear sign only lights up that sign, there won't be spill over from it, it probably won't even make it to the walkway below it. The lights for the building itself are made, are designed so that it shines into the parking lot, not out of the parking lot. The poles went up between yesterday and today, the light fixtures go up tomorrow, as long as the lift showed up, and at 4:30, the lift wasn't there yet, it was supposed to be there at noon time. As soon as the lift gets there, the lights will go on, at which point you'll take that light that's on the roof that's bothering everybody because it's shining out, that one comes off, and there's a pole between the openings on Church Street that faces into the lot, so nothing's coming out.
Okay, and the other lights will just shine straight down?
The other poles are there, and they're all made to go into the lot, so that, yes, the lot will be white, but the sidewalk will be lit, the street won't be.
Mm-hmm.
So, you'll see it that way, but you'll see, you'll be looking into a white box, but the light will not come out of it, but that sign won't come anywhere near any of that lot.
Cheryl.
Hello, everyone. Well, Emily, our chair, couldn't be here tonight, so I am sitting or filling in for her. So, I did talk with her briefly about the application, and we saw, I think, the same that you did, which was the, before this revision and before the sign committee recommendations, so that we did have the same concern about the, how much of the sign van in height was being taken up, and how the location of the fixtures were getting close to the corner, so I do think that the revision is better, and the light fixture being the straight arm is better. I would say, I think, my preference would be a little bit smaller, but if the light fixtures are truly that size, I don't know if you have an actual...
It's all to scale, yeah.
All to scale, okay. Because the light fixture size and the projection is not noted on the drawings, at least I didn't see it.
If you have a cut of it, if you wanted to take a look.
Okay.
Shows the size.
Okay, great. Yeah, that's a, that's a good, good size, yeah.
It's pretty small.
And then, the only other thing I would suggest is that we've had conversations about lighting on signs in non-business districts, which I would think that the side, the location on the side of the building is similar because you have residences nearby, and I don't know if you have put in place any regulations about when the sign lights would go off, but we would suggest that they go off when the business is closed, particularly on the side.
Hybrid, yeah, hybrid as well.
Well, those signs will be on the timer.
Is that covered in, Marion might know this, in either the Board of Appeals decision or the Planning Board decision? No?
I don't believe the signage was in design yet, and, I wasn't on the board at the time this was reviewed, but I don't think the signage was a part of that package.
Yes, okay.
But I think that's something that we're looking at, we're going to be looking at signage and lighting for signage. There's a new Supreme Court ruling apparently that affects signage, so we've had a little delay or a little step back in understanding what that implications of that are, but we do want to address these things, so that they can be fairly predictable and consistent across the other businesses.
Yeah, yeah, so we can certainly factor that into our sign permit.
Okay, that's it for me, thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Cheryl.
Okay, do you have any other comments, or any on this?
No, I don't.
I don't either. I do agree with Cheryl, that, you know, we should make sure that, you know, we're not going to be on time, is that it's consistent with the closing hour of the store, or maybe, you know, 10 or 15 minutes after that, you know, in the, I guess it doesn't matter, I mean, the, we're not considering the lights they're putting in the parking lot, those are not part of our purview. Presumably those would be on for a little while to allow people to leave.
There was no determination that the light should necessarily be turned off or turned on, it's a question of whether there's a problem with the parking lot later on at night, there's security issues with the parking lot like that. So, that was not set as a condition in the permits, not on any of them. So, if you want the lights turned off when the rest, on the sign lighting turned off by timer, when the restaurant's not open, which seems reasonable, and I think we all agree, that would be fine.
Yep.
Then it should be a condition in the sign permit.
Right, okay. Yeah, and that's, the other thing was mentioned, we don't control, obviously, the lights in the parking lot be on that. Okay.
So, are there any issues with the color temperature issue that John raised? Is that?
No, there's no issues.
Making it consistent with the other signs, there shouldn't be any issue?
I just need to coordinate it with the existing signs.
Okay.
And I can get that information from Falcone Properties.
Okay.
Okay, great.
Okay, so we have a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the application of 556 Adam Street LLC DBA Novara to place a lit two signs at 556 Adam Street.
Well, I'll have a friendly amendment, do you want to make, do you want to realize it?
Well, make a friendly amendment just in lieu of fact of the backlight being put out on a certain time frame. I'm not sure whether it's 15 minutes after the restaurant closes or what we want to think about that.
I would say upon closing.
Upon closing.
When the restaurant's closed, the lights are off.
Is there anything else you want to add to that?
I don't, I don't think so.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
unanimous. Thank you.
Thanks, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, item seven on the agenda is also a Novara. It's a reconsideration of the liquor license because we have one additional investor. And I guess pretty much everybody knows who the investor is anyways, because it's been all over the papers, but that being said, I mean, I don't know how much we have to discuss, I mean, unless anybody wants to discuss it, other than we have a motion in front of us.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't have anything to add to that.
I don't either.
I don't have any questions, unless Marion had anything she wanted to add.
We're not sure really what the procedure is for this, because I haven't done it before. You add a new investor, once you have your liquor license, you still have to send that information to ABCC, and it goes through the Board of Selectmen, so presumably the Board of Selectmen have to say they have no problem or no objection to the new investor. So I would think your motion would want to have some...
The investor's well known and we have no...
I don't have any objection myself.
We've submitted the required information, as far as we know. Again, if ABCC is not satisfied, they will let me know, and then I may submit additional, but I believe we have everything here that will be required.
Okay.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the application for a liquor license for 556 Adam Street LLC DBA Novara to be resubmitted to the ABCC for reconsideration.
Second.
Motion made second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
unanimous.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Marion.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks, Dan.
Good work, everything.
Okay. Do we have a hard copy of the show's report? I don't have it. Good evening.
Hi, Joe.
Very good, thanks. That's new. Okay, start with ours. Well, good evening, Joe Pradak, Building Commissioner, and I guess we'll just start with the most glaring thing I have to report on, which is the volume of permits in the correspondent fees that are projected to come along with that. So we're just over the halfway mark of the year, we've issued a total of just building permits of 902, whereas we had a total last year of 1,100, sorry, 12, 13. You know, and the fees from that, that we've generated are currently $550,000. So given the fact that there's still another half a year left, we're looking at a projected million dollar revenue, which is helpful, certainly, and it shows a great economy. You know, but the downside to that, as I've said before, is that it's certainly strained the efforts of the department to tackle zoning issues, the day-to-day zoning issues, the unregistered cars, the junk vehicle, the junk vehicles and the commercial vehicles, debris, things of that nature. We're just spending all our time doing inspections, reviewing permit applications, processing all of that. So that's where we're at. As far as projects, probably the biggest one coming up is Woodmere, which is, Woodman Drive is the former St. Pius Rectory at 865 Brush Hill Road. They have just permitted a couple of foundations for that site, and they still have some, 15 or so buildings that will be permitted over the next couple of months, probably most of them before the end of the fiscal year. So that is, you know, one of the largest projects we've got going. Of course, we just, you know, just wrapped up work on two great new restaurants, obviously the Novara and the Plate. And we also have the expansion of Mr. Chan's, that's under review right now, so that will be coming as well.
Okay.
And I guess one that I've not neglected to mention, but didn't think to mention over the past couple of times, is the renovation that happened recently at 480 Adam Street, where the Blue Hills Bank is. That building was purchased recently by Hajar Companies, and they've, along with the Blue Hills Bank, they've totally remodeled the whole building, to the point where they put an elevator in that services all three floors, they put a full, brand-new fire sprinkler system and fire alarm system, and really taken that, they've taken that building to a new level.
Yeah, it definitely has. You can see the depth of the outside.
It attracts, you know, great tenants. So I just think that's, you know, worth mentioning. Several new houses underway. Probably the one most visible is the newest on Forbes Road, which is a, there was a tear down of 115 Forbes Road, former property of Dr. Oak, and I think a lot of people knew him. And the new home that's going there is 5,000 square feet in area, not to mention two floors. So there's been a transformation down in that neighborhood, certainly. I think for the most part for the better. There will be a new home, fairly large new home coming at 203 Hillside, it'll be another tear-down to rebuild. And there are several others in process, 70 Governor's Stone Line, 38 Governors Road, there's been so many. But all of it points to a good, strong economy.
Yeah, definitely had an awful lot more single unit tear downs and replaced with that.
Yeah, there's been a real increase in that, in that type of project. Somewhat mind-boggling to me, but...
I mean, it's happened in other communities, it only happened in Needham 10, 15 years ago, but...
And it's still happening. I know Needham is flat out with this type of renovation, and probably other towns too.
No, you've had, obviously, you say you're strained, you know, because of the level of permits, and I can imagine, it takes you away from doing other stuff. Have you found, or what are you trying to do to keep up with that? You know, you have some homeowners who are, you know, frustrated that they can't get something done in two to three months, you know, after they have stamped plans, and their contractors are wondering why. What can we do to alleviate that burden? Is there anything?
Well, I do think that one of the complicating factors this year, that started back in the spring of 2015, where one of my staff transferred to another department, so we were short-staffed while we replaced her, but then there was an injury of another staff member that was out for several months. So it was kind of a unique year.
Not your typical year.
Not your typical year, and short staffing was certainly a factor, and we're just digging our way out of that.
Right.
And that's been a long road, too. You know, when somebody goes out on an injury and they end up, you know, using the workers' comp, they've been out all that time, but when they came back, when they come back, now they have, they still have all their vacation time left that they have to use by the end of the year, coupled with the fact that in every year, you know, we suggest all year long to our employees, you know, take your vacation, use your vacation, you're going to lose it, and everybody says, "Yeah, yeah, yeah." And come November, everybody's cramming to get their vacation time in. So I do anticipate a smoother road this year and getting caught back up, at least to a level where we're getting some of the high priority zoning issues taken care of. I think that, you know, the Thayer Nursery zoning issues this year certainly took away a lot of my time, you know, dealing with issues on both sides of the coin on that one, and hopefully this year, I'm hopeful that this year will be a better year from that point of view. So in the last piece of that, and we've talked about this day before, is developing an educational piece of our operation, because so much of our time is spent teaching...
New code, yeah.
The new code, yes, which is about to change again, but the permitting system itself, we spend a lot of time teaching people over and over again how to use the permitting system.
The paperless system, you mean?
The paperless system.
I was going to ask that. How is that system working?
Well, it's, it is not the panacea that we would like it to be. And I think that's true of, you know, as I talk to other building inspectors in other towns, it's true of every system, it really doesn't matter what vendor you buy from.
Because it's the people, the reluctance of the people to use it, the contractors...
Right, and then just the inability of the systems to deal with all the intricacies of building code and zoning issues. Every project is, every project, every house, every building is different, and it has its own unique set of parameters under which you build. In some ways, looking forward to the buildings at Woodmere, because although they have, they're going to build 15 or 16 different buildings, there's only two or three styles. So once I approve one set of plans, the same will apply to a couple of buildings down the road. And I wish more projects were like that, but we just don't have that available to us.
Now, your inspectors don't go out in the field with tablets at all, so how do they inspect? Do they do it in paper and then transfer it over, or...
Yeah, pretty much. Tablets would be the next level, but that's a significant investment.
This day and age, it's not that big anymore, but, I mean...
I may have to get more up to speed on that.
Yeah. Yeah, that's something we should be looking at, you know, as we go forward.
The tablets, the tablets aren't cheap enough. It's whether they have, whether they need broadband access or not, if they do, they're a little more expensive, obviously.
But I mean, it's obvious, though, that we're generating some very good revenue, and I think that, and it's not so much to your fault, it's the fact that this is a good economy, and a lot of people are doing a lot of work, and that some people do get frustrated that, you know, they come in with plans and it's been two, three months, and they come back and change things and so forth and so on. So, yeah, it's a difficult situation to be in for you, because you're obviously generating a lot of revenue and doing a good job at what you're doing, but you can't keep up with it all.
Right, and we'd like to speed it up. And the other piece, you know, the building code, the education on the building code, that, you know, the state certainly is not providing that. I mean, I deal with architects and contractors who are still designing and coming into our office prepared to build a building under the sixth edition of the code, we're about to enter the ninth edition, you know. So, you know, I have some ideas and some plans on some trainings that we could do, or some educational piece that we could introduce into the system, but I just, I...
Do you foresee contractors kind of taking, you know, feeling like they would want to participate in something like that, or...
I do, and I think what we would also do is try and get that, because contractors now have to, they have to do continuing education, so if we could develop some sort of program that if the contractors would come in here, we would gear it...
So they can get credits for it.
So they can get credit for it.
That makes sense.
There's probably not a webinar out there on it anyways, that you...
There are, but they're very general, and, you know, what's happened with the codes over the last several years is they've become, they've become much more science-based and much less experience-based. And, you know, our contractors, when you become a contractor, it's because you've come up through the ranks and you've learned through experience, not through going to college. So there's a gap there.
Very technical.
Yeah, yeah. So, again, the education piece, I look forward to the day when we're able to do it, but right now, I'm just struck, every day, you know, my entire staff just trying to process permits and get the inspections done, because, you know, that's what people, people are paying for. And the last piece is that, yes, we have, I think what will help too is, I'll be at the Warrant Committee tomorrow night, if we are able to fund, at least on a part-time basis, a separate zoning enforcement, code enforcement personnel, not someone, and it wouldn't be someone that would do plan reviews or zoning reviews on whether or not a house can be built or an addition can be built, it's strictly to be out in the field looking at, you know, violations of the zoning bylaw that are aimed at protecting property values.
Yeah, that makes sense.
If we're able to, if we're successful with that, I see an even better opportunity to improve things.
Okay. Even more reason to buy tablets, right?
Yes. Chairman, one of your upcoming items is going to be talking about new articles for your annual town meeting.
Oh, yeah.
And one of those articles, we have the Building Commissioner here, I thought maybe he could speak to the construction start time article that we'd like to submit for the town meeting.
Yeah, I think this has been developed over the past couple of weeks, and, you know, we, just for a little background, we often get complaints when a particular construction project is going on in someone's neighborhood. People complain that, you know, they're starting at 6 o'clock, they're turning their backhoes on, and running their compressors and air hammers at ungodly hours, and when I tell people that we don't have a bylaw that regulates this, they're shocked. And a lot of people, you know, they, well-intended, they, while the project is going on, they say, "Well, you know, put me in touch with who I can get a hold of to help change this," and I may be referring to the Planning Board, but then when the construction project is over in their neighborhood, you know, nothing's come forth. So I think it's, I think most cities and towns have a noise-regulating bylaw, but I do think it's important to, that it not be a bylaw that limits the ability to work. It's a bylaw specifically limiting whether or not someone's making offensive noise.
It's supposed to be from 7 to 7 Monday through Friday. I think that's what it says.
Yeah, 7 to 7 Monday through Friday, 8 to 5 on Saturdays, 10 to 3 on Sundays.
And it would not encompass just basic landscape maintenance?
Yeah, in other words, people mowing your lawn, trimming your bushes, that type of thing, and it's not, it's really geared towards construction projects. So any of that...
Yeah, specific, it's not, it's not anything where a homeowner can't go out and work leisurely around their yard with a power tool.
Right, and there may be, you know, I haven't, I don't recall any complaints on landscapers that are working on Saturdays and Sundays, it may happen, but I don't think we're seeing a need there. I think the real need is...
But presumably, it would apply to landscaping, construction projects, in other words, a building of that...
Yeah, it could, if it were, I guess it could apply to that, you know, if you were, you know, planting a few trees, stone patios and things, and you had, you know, backhoes and cement mixtures and things like that, chainsaws, sure, I think we could probably apply it there if the need were there.
Okay. Any questions?
Yeah, it's great. Thanks, Joe.
Okay, thanks very much.
Okay, next on the agenda is item nine, the quarterly report of the Planning Department. I think Bill is here. Hi, Bill.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Lots of stuff going on, huh?
There is. The Planning Department works to help developers and homeowners navigate the process while adhering to the established policies and laws of the Town of Milton, with an eye towards careful growth and finding innovative solutions while protecting the town, its neighborhoods, and its residents. I have a list of projects that are under the auspices of the Planning Board. We have a definitive subdivision application currently before the Planning Board at 3341 Pleasant Street. It's an eight-house subdivision on a 3.6 acre site. Preliminary subdivision was approved back in July 2015. The public hearing should close February 11th on the definitive subdivision, at which time the Board will vote a, they'll vote a decision of conditions for the upcoming That will be a private way with, we've attempted to make it a public way, it's the developer's desire to have it as a private way. Private way, they know that we won't plow it, we won't cut the grass, we won't care for the trees, we won't fix their road, we won't care for their stormwater system. It all will be taken care of by a homeowner association. So part of the conditions for that subdivision will be to review the Homeowners' Association and those documents. 865 Brush Hill was a five-house definitive subdivision. All five of those houses have been sold, they're all under agreement. They're in varying stages of completion, with a couple of houses having people in them already. The others should be finished this spring, they're in, they're that far ahead. On the site plan approval, three units have been approved, and they're single-family homes within the Brushwood Estates, which is 333 Brush Hill. That was an amended special permit. The three houses are under construction, the foundation holes were approved, they're waiting for a break in the cold weathers, they can pour the concrete, and they'll start building on top of those within 30 days after, so they should have something this summer in those. Dunkin' Donuts down at 545 Adam Street is looking for a site plan approval. They should be in front of the Planning Board in the second meeting in February. The plan calls to remodel the interior, have new front doors, back doors, a new freezer on the back of the building, and new signage. The signage will come under a different permit, eventually it'll wind up coming back here to the Selectmen because it's a lit sign. They want to change the scheme on the front of the building.
Similar to what some of the newer concept, like they want in Canton, or don't even know...
They're actually looking to, they want to increase the number of signs, they, because it's a bump-out, they want to put signs on the three sides of the bump-out, and that's just not going to work with the Sign Review Committee. They may wind up being able to wrap colors on it, but they're not going to be able to put Dunkin' Donuts, Dunkin' Donuts, Dunkin' Donuts, it's just not going to fly with the...
When you say bump-out, what are we talking?
The front door sticks out a little bit because of the handicap entrance going into the store, but the automatic opening doors now will be removed and replaced.
With just conventional...
Yes. Fuller Village.
And no drive-through, correct?
No drive-through.
But it was a survey.
That wasn't for the drive-through. They, very early on, came and said, "We want a drive-through," and it's like, "Not in Milton, not on that location, you may find another one in Milton, but you're not getting one on that site." And they said, "Well, we can go around the building, we only need seven cars," and it's like, "No, no, show me a Dunkin' Donuts that only has seven cars in the queue." Doesn't happen, it's not happening here, and they're not taking and dumping cars back on Adam Street.
All you have to do is just go to Redrow and see what that one looks like in the morning, and you never want one.
We already said no. I mean, we were definitive, and no. Fuller Village, Fuller Village is before the Planning Board for our site plan approval. They're doing two minor footprint expansions, one on the Gordon Building, they're increasing the size of the dining room and the card room, and then they're building a locker room on the main building on the Brush Hill campus, and it's just putting a locker room in an area in the front of the building that, once it's up, you won't notice that it wasn't there in the first place. But that was approved at the last meeting. On the special permits, Thayer Nursery Special Permit for an agricultural nursery landscaping development was approved in December. The special permit is being appealed by the residents of 23 Parkwood Drive. I've been coordinating with Town Council and providing the requested information as requested and as needed. St. Pius Property, 865 Brush Hill, development of 36 new planned unit townhouses comprising of four affordable units. The development's currently underway, the roadway's laid, is, the roadway layout is constructed. The first three foundations have been permitted with the Building Department. The big slowdown up there was an underground oil tank in front of the existing mansion, and they had to take out X amount of soil. Their soil whole was more than 20 feet down, so they took out considerable amount of fill, and they had to work within LSP every single day on what was coming. That's gone, that is now all filled back in, and they'll start working on those two units during this winter. I'd expect the first units for occupancy there, probably late summer, early fall of this year. Strange piece there, they're covering... I'd expect the first units for occupancy there probably late summer, early fall of this year. Strange piece there, there currently is an appeal of the zoning that's being used for that site by Inabutter. Again, I've been working with town council, providing the necessary requested data on it. They're not appealing the project, they're repealing the zoning that it was created under. That's the only thing that, there is no time limit on. They missed the time limit to appeal the project, so they're going after the zoning that allowed it.
As what, spots on it, or?
That's what they're claiming.
Yeah, okay.
Zoning change workshop, master plan implementation. The planning board is working on potential zoning issues of concern per the master plan. There's a B and B zoning article, revised sign bylaw, the ice house zoning, and the non-conforming business zoning. All of those have been chewing up some time at the last planning board meetings. East Milton Movie Theater, the restaurant's open, it's bringing a lot of attention to East Milton Square. As you just saw with the sign, with the lights, with the parking. The parking park is an ongoing, the traffic commission's been working on it, I've been working on it with both Falcone and Vance and the chief of police. So we have been paying attention to it, we do know that there are hiccups in it, and we're trying to work through those. Major projects not under the planning board umbrella would be the East Milton parking. Howitzstein Hudson's under contract with the town and the state to complete the design engineering and the development of construction documents for the project bidding. The 25% hearing was held September 9th at the Council on Aging. The public hearing process allows for written comments to mass DOT. It was stated at the hearing that the public comment period got extended through the beginning of October. Since the hearing, Howitzstein Hudson's engineers came up with a slight design change in response to comments from the hearing. The design change flips the parking area and the green space by 180 degrees. The change helps define the connectivity of the area, adds more than 2,000 square feet of additional green space, and provides a more usable green space than we currently have. Currently, mass DOT engineers and Howitzstein Hudson are making the presentation to Federal Highway Administration. And that's, that's really where we are right now. I've been working with town council on revised green span documents, you got a draft of that yesterday. Under the 40B developments, I've been working with town council on the Randolph Ave 40B appeal, giving him the data that he requests, when requested. Zero Central Ave, I submitted a notice of intent to the Conservation Commission to take down the town's portion of the building. Conservation Commission issued the town an order of conditions on December 16th. 450 Granite Ave, the Falcone Companies own the building at 450 Granite Ave. The building houses both Milton Nails and Spa, which is due to open February 7th, and the Sprint Store, which is already open.
Those are the first floor locations?
Sprint is on the first floor, on the left-hand side, as you look at the front of the building. Milton Nails and Spa has two-thirds of the first floor, they have all of the second floor.
Okay, okay.
It's a, it's a large operation. I actually was in there last week and didn't think they'd have it done as fast. I was in there this afternoon, and they're ready to open next week, so they're flying. The Ullin Skating Rink, the town's been offered a one-year permit extension. I've been working with Curry College on the future efforts of the college at the rink. Currently, I oversee the management contract with Curry. This oversight leads to frequent discussions with DCR, Curry personnel, the rink users, and the public. We're working on that 25-year lease with an expectation for a completed business plan with a workable performer, that being assumed, forecasted, and informal information presented in advance of an actual formal information piece to this board. Some of the other pieces, Wireless Telecommunications Design Review Committee, committee actually met last night for a T-Mobile and SBA expansion at the Legion Post. It is, everything is inside the tower itself. T-Mobile has bought MetroPCS, and they're going to, T-Mobile's going to update the antennas that are within the tower itself. They'll take what was three and make it six. You won't see it from the outside. They do need new radio boxes on the, on the ground, so it adds to the value of the radio structure itself. Minor growth, but growth is growth. The Animal Shelter Building, let's see, I'm handling the site issues for the selectman property off of Quarry Street. In other words, wetland identification, survey issues, and the utility locations. The wetland plan is in hand, the next step is filing with the Conservation Commission. Tim Zawinski is currently assigned to handle the day-to-day committee issues. I guess currently, we are waiting on a formal and signed MOU between the town and the Milton Animal League for the definitive financing before we spend more to get to the, file an NOI to identify the, to get an order of conditions for the building. Sign Committee, the new signage bylaw rewrite with efforts from the planning board and the sign review committee, these discussions are ongoing, and they get deeper and deeper with the Supreme Court decision that Cheryl talked about, so.
It's mainly a freedom of speech issue, but it's just much more far-reaching than.
It is. It, it takes into account what you're saying, how you're saying it, where you're saying it, and being fair across the board. Some of the signs that are coming before you are due to come. Seasons Hospice, Seasons Hospice is planning on going to the zoning board of appeals to gain permission for their sign because they didn't do it in their original CBA decision. Seasons will meet with the sign review committee. They actually met with the sign review committee to do an initial piece, and we gave them some ideas, we completely changed what they had come up with, and the sign guy actually liked it, they're taking it back to corporate, and we have not heard from them, and it's been a couple of months now. But the upcoming ones are a revised Dunkin' Donuts, a new massage parlor at the second floor of 527 Adams Street above Atlantic Financial. They're coming in for a new sign that, I'm not exactly sure where, I know where they want to put it above the door, I'm just not sure how that's going to look. We're going to come back for the lights on the signage at the Milton Nails and Spa. The building commissioner can approve the sign, but only an unlit sign. He can't approve a lit sign because it's in the business district. So the sign review committee looked at the sign, they liked the sign, it mimics what was there before, it says Milton Nails, Nails and Spa. The lights are there, but the lights will not be turned on until it comes before this Crono and Christie is looking to change their signage. They came before the sign review committee in January, and due to the, due to the information that Crono and Christie got at that meeting, they've changed their design. They came in, they, they currently have an awning that has their name written on the awning. And the idea is, don't write on the awning, write on the sign band, and just have your awning. And between the members of the sign review committee, talking with the managers of the jewelers, they came back and said, we like your ideas, we don't like what our people have already given us, we're going back and do it again. So we'll see them within the next month or so. Green Communities, the state with Department of DoER and EEOA has a reporting process that is, it's a serious pain. It's time-consuming, and it, for as much as we thought we were going to have a contractor who would supply the information, they're supplying the information, but the information now has to be input into a state system that is just, it's a bear. It is a Excel sheet that you put it in, and you can't save it, and you cannot send it. So you're, you're writing it, you're printing out a piece, and you're going back, and you keep making copies of it until you get to the point that you can push the button to say send. Their system's awful. Many communities stopped going through green communities just because of this. They've decided, you know, enough is enough, we're saving more, but, or they have a energy department that's doing it for them. Traffic Commission, we had a traffic commission last Wednesday. Last Wednesday was, we talked about East Milton, we talked about two-hour long-term parking in East Milton, we talked about the service home parking, we talked about service home parking at, on Elliott Street. So we're going to flip some of the Elliott Street, just literally across the street from each other, not appreciable numbers, just four from one side to four to the other, four from that over to the other side. Police chief will come in and give you his update, but, you know, we have been active in looking at what people are requiring for, for the parking needs of both the business and the residents around, and at the same time, the residents who are using those businesses. I mean, if you go to get your, you get your haircut, you get a facial, you get your nails done, the square primarily, East Milton Square primarily has one-hour parking zones. This is not, that doesn't work. I guess it takes more than an hour to get a facial, a nail, some, we estimate two hours works, it does. So we've changed some of the one-hours to two-hours, now it's just a case of changing up the signs, and DPW's taking care of that. So we're listening and adapting where we can. And that's all I have.
Bill, you want to, we've got a bunch of articles, planning board articles in front of us. Want any comments on any of those, or?
Let's see, we should have left Cheryl here.
We got the bed and breakfast one.
Bed and breakfast, we've been trying for a while, but at the same time, throughout the master plan process, even when, before we got to our visioning, we had sent around a townwide questionnaire looking for the topics that we would include in a plan. And the number one thing that kept coming up was a bed and breakfast article. When we did our master plan, again, it came up as being one of the priority issues for us to move forward with. I know that the planning board has a couple of times brought it up, but for one reason or another, it just never got past the board, and now it is submitted, and hopefully it gets done this time.
Do you know if this was modeled after any other towns, or?
It was modeled after several other towns. I mean, we didn't just take one, we took several others. Some of the stuff that I found, some of the stuff Tim found, some of the stuff that Emily Ennis found. Attached to that is the provision to be able to impose a sales tax on rooms.
Right, yep.
So that's two articles. The housekeeping article of Section 10, known as the general bylaws, by redesignating Section L of Section 3, the assisted living, because it didn't get used, and because when we turn these things in sometimes, we don't, we just state that it's going to happen in Section 3, and there'll be a line, and somehow or another, we wind up with two Ls. So we're taking the.
Oh, you mean just two lettered sections, for two different topics, lettered L, is that what you mean?
Yes.
So it's a correction.
Two subsection Ls. You've got an L for assisted living, you've got L for the landscaping. So it's just a case of, let's get it right. We'll move the assisted living down to P. That's just general, that's a little less than housekeeping, but it's a typo that we should have picked up on before.
Non-conforming business use?
The non-conforming business use is meant to be a discussion starting point for town It becomes an issue of, you could keep giving it to the planning board, and you're going to get the planning board's opinion. What we have here is an attempt by the planning board to have a larger-than-just-planning-board discussion of non-conforming businesses in residential districts.
On town meeting floor?
That's kind of where they're going.
How many days is this town meeting going to be?
They what?
How many days is this town meeting going to be?
It's May, so, you know, it's going to go for some.
It's June this year.
Up to six days, right?
It's, it's.
Maybe more.
It's an attempt to get, to have a discussion that instead of continually doing overlays, that we be a little more, a little more general in our bylaw, and allow, allow existing businesses to grow somewhat. A lot of these businesses were there before zoning, and now they're hemmed in in what they have. We're not, because a business had, and I used the guy that was there the other day at the planning board, he said, you know, his was a coal yard. Well, we don't want a coal yard, and we don't want to expand the coal yard, but if it had a commercial purpose, maybe there is something that.
It's more of a commercial purpose.
Commercial could happen on, it's, it's up for discussion how far you want to take that, and that's what this is, is whether that discussion takes place going up to town meeting, or at town meeting, at least the discussion's taking place, and it's not being controlled by five individuals. It's, there will be a set of public hearings for it, whether they're in front of the planning board, in front of the warrant committee, there'll be public discussion on the articles. And if it means that it gets changed, then so be it. But we understand that there are certain issues here that, I think everybody has something in it that they don't like. But I think at the same time, you read it, and there's something in it that you will like. So it's, this is the discussion. This is the plan for that discussion.
Hope you're going to attempt to come up with a bylaw by the end of that discussion, or just?
We'd hope yes.
Okay.
A generalized bylaw, not something that is site-specific.
Okay.
I mean, we have over 24 non-conforming businesses around town, and do we really want to help them grow? Do we want to, you know, force them into having to go down the avenue of an overlay every time they want to change their use?
Okay. Are there any other, should we come to bed and breakfast? Bed and breakfast, hotel tax, non-conforming business use, assisted living, that's it, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And the housekeeping.
And the housekeeping, yeah.
Elder P.
Right. Perfect. Okay. Thanks, Bill. Any questions for Bill?
No.
Thanks.
Thanks, Bill.
Okay, let's see. Item 10 on the agenda is the approval of the May 2016 annual town meeting articles. These are obviously out in the boilerplate articles, so. But at this point, as far as we know, these are the ones we have, and a bunch of them we just talked about. We talked about the construction.
We talked about the construction start time bylaw, we talked about the bed and breakfast bylaw, adding the ability to tax those bed and breakfasts for hotel tax, the nonconforming business use bylaw, the assisted living, which is a housekeeping. There will be a dog ordinance bylaw, which we haven't talked about yet, but we'll have the chief in here to-
The police chief will be in at one of your future meetings, Mr. Chairman.
We've got an affordable housing trust appropriation, which is our article basically to see what some, if there's any free cash around. Last time we threw five grand, I think, at affordable housing trust, which-
Well, hopefully we'll have more than that this time.
Yeah. So now we have, we have right now in our bank $5,500, climbing. And the safe routes, safe routes to school easement.
It's not really for the schools, right?
No.
It's for the East Milton parking deck.
It's a right-of-way article.
Yeah, that's for the East Milton, yeah. Yeah, so this is a misnomer here.
It's an East Milton deck project, but it's-
It's just the right-of-ways for the East Milton parking.
Right. And we will discuss that at the 20-
But in the article, it references the school, safe routes to school, as drafted by Town Council John Flynn. We will have our town engineering to a future meeting to speak to this article, but it is in conjunction with safe routes to school through the East Milton Deck Project because there's so many children that walk through East Milton to get to Cali-Cot and Cunningham. So it does have some causal relationship to safe routes to school.
A little bit, but it's more just easements taken so that that construction project can take place.
It is, but at the same time-
Temporary easement, some of them.
Hillary's right. Because we want to encourage people to take and walk to schools. So if you're coming from Granite Place, Church Street, Franklin Street, and you're walking up, you get to, you go to Cross Granite Ave, at that crosswalk there, it's, that's what we're designing that part through the middle of the, of the green space so that it goes to beside the post office, at which point they can go straight ahead to go to Cali-Cot Cunningham, or to go to the Yard Center, or to go to St. Agathus.
Or to St. Agathus, yeah. And especially where the boulevards, where that access is across, that's extremely dangerous right there.
Exactly.
Moving that one up and catching.
Yeah, right. So that's kind of, it does go hand-in-hand a little bit with the-
Because there's a lot of walking in there, especially for the schools in that area.
Much needed.
Yes.
This was discussed at the 25% hearing also.
Yes. But it's a good catch.
Is there any connection, though, to the funding for that program over on the Glover School? Is there any connection?
No, I mean, it's federal funding, so that's why this requirement is taking.
It is a good point to put in. I mean, anytime you can, anytime in any application back to the state, the feds, and it has to go on to the tip, if you can provide linkage, that's, that's a check mark in that column.
Yep.
And anytime you get linkage in several different fields, you've got a better project and you, you get a higher mark for that one when you go to the tip.
Mm-hmm.
So it's a good catch to put that in.
All right, so maybe it's not a misnomer.
It works.
Okay.
Okay, and we'll also have a, there's a land transfer of town-owned land at the end of Alvin Avenue.
Can you speak to that one a little bit, Tom?
Yeah, what it is, and there'll be a lot more coming up in this between now and May, but the Affordable Housing Trust has been talking with Habitat for Humanities to try and get some affordable housing in, in Milton. Currently, there is no, Habitat has no units in Milton. Habitat is all home ownership. They don't really build rental housing. They don't even like to build condominium-type housing, they like to build single-family homes. So this would be an attempt, there is one at the end of Alvin Avenue that's town-owned right now, a little bit shy, 10,000 square feet. It is very close to Andrews Park and it's been owned by the town since the early '30s. So there's still some title research to be done to who exactly, you know, controls it. We think it's the town, but it would be to transfer that land to the Affordable Housing Trust. Then the Affordable Housing Trust would then do a, an RFP, a very specific one, to, for two units of affordable housing to be built on that property. So approximately 5,000 square foot lots for each, for each single-family home.
And Tom, would they be designated to either just Milton residents or people who work in Milton?
You could, the same as any, any other, you could have a local preference, but there's still a, you know, it would, it would be the same as, basically the same as a comprehensive permit. You could have a local preference of, I guess up to 80% or 70%, I forget what the percentage is. We would, albeit not fair market value, we would attempt to actually sell the land to the Habitat. Habitat has been known to pay as, as much as $30,000 for a lot of land, so might be able to get $60,000 or $70,000 into the Affordable Housing Trust by doing this, as well as creating two affordable units. There's a lot of permitting to be done, you know, because obviously it would be nonconforming. So, so the question is, and what the research we still have to do on, on it is how to go forward with that, whether it's through a comprehensive permit process that the Affordable Housing Trust would bring forward to CBA, or whether it's to try and just go through conventional, you know, conventional permitting with a variance. But that's basically what that is.
So right now, this draft of this article says to see if the town will vote to transfer or care, custody, and control of the land described below to the Board of Selectmen for purposes of conveying it to the trust.
Yes.
So is that because you said there's a title question right now that we're not-
Yes.
Clear what board it's under, is that the issue?
Well, originally it was thought it might be taxed title land, but then the treasurer's saying it's not on his list. We just know that it's town of Milton land and it's been town of Milton land since the '30s. So, so there's still some research the Town Council has to do.
Okay.
You know, assuming that the town, that it is owned by the town, then it's under care and custody of the Board of Selectmen right now. So that would be allowing the Selectmen to transfer to the Affordable Housing Trust, basically. Let's see.
I'd be okay with submitting that one for purposes of submitting it into the warrant, but I think we're going to need, I mean, our board in order to know what our position on the merits of it is, we're going to need more information to-
Right, there's, there's a lot more information that has to come out of that in terms of, and a lot of that's going to come up between now and May, but.
Okay.
As long as we're talking about the Affordable Housing Trust, I'm going to also mention that we are planning a first-time home buyer program. I don't think Milton's ever done one before, but there, there are a lot of state subsidized mortgage programs out there for people up to as much as 130% of arreign median income that can get, you know, very favorable down payments and lower interest rates. And in order to qualify for these, you need to go through this process. So it's a four-day, four-two-hour sessions, and we'll be having it in the second, third week in March on a Tuesday and Thursday at the library, so.
That's great.
It's upcoming.
Great idea.
Let's see, we also have an extension of the Town Government Study Committee. They were set, they would do the sunset this year.
December of 2016, Mr. Chairman.
So this will be extending it for another year.
Actually, for three years.
Is it three years?
2019.
Okay.
Which is quite a long time.
Yes. And then we have a citizen petition for the playgrounds, and that was the group that came in last week to citizen speak.
Sure.
So that's it. We do have a motion of-
Yeah, I'll move that we approve the following articles for inclusion on the May 2nd, 2016 annual town meeting warrant, amend general bylaws, construction start time, amend Chapter 10 of the general bylaws, bed and breakfast, amend general bylaws, bed and breakfast tax, amend Chapter 10 of the general bylaws, nonconforming business use, amend Chapter 10 of the general bylaws, assisted living residence development, amend Chapter 6 of the general bylaws, dog ordinance, Affordable Housing Trust appropriation, land trust, Alvin Avenue, safe routes to school easement, extension of Town Government Study Committee, and citizens petition for playgrounds.
I'll second the motion.
Motion's been seconded. Any further discussion? Singed on all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
unanimous. Item 11 on the agenda is a conference with Logan, Logan CAC update with Cindy Christensen. Hi, Cindy.
Hi, Cindy. Thanks for waiting.
Sure. Thank you. I was going to ask. So my understanding is you only got the report today, which is okay. I wanted to mention that this, this report is multipurpose. I'm also sharing it with the Airplane Noise Advisory Committee. And I also am trying to make a document so that if for some reason I'm not here or can't represent the town anymore in some capacity, that, that there's some notes that someone else can look at to see things that might be on the horizon. So tonight, I'm going to try to not talk about the things that I think might be on the horizon because a lot of that is their four-year information. There's not a lot we can do about it right now, it's just that I want, I want someone else besides me to understand these things. I also wanted to mention that although the, I think it's been about the last week, those of us under the arrival pass have had some relief, those underneath the departures have really been taking a pounding. So as, as I think anyone who has represented the town on this issue has done, we do care about all of them. There are a lot of people who are getting woken up at 5:15 in the morning from these departures and as much as we appreciate not having the fours going over us for the last few days, there's still a large part of the town residents who are suffering quite a bit, a lot of them from, they also get the fours. So they, they are on my mind. There was a Logan CAC meeting about two weeks ago. I attended in person along with Andy Schmidt, who's now the current chair of the Airplane Noise Advisory Committee, and Katie Conlin also attended. I just wanted to say particularly to the residents of Milton that this is kind of special, that the, at the CAC meetings for the last month, Milton has had guests come. And I think it really has shown the other communities how serious we're taking this issue. So Andy's been to two meetings, Katie came to one, Walter Timmelt came to one along with Steve Tehan, and I really do think that it makes a difference. At this meeting, this last meeting, the CAC did not have a quorum. We do not have to follow open meeting laws, so we could continue to meet, but there was no voting. Their, their quorum for voting is one-third of the approximately 38 members and we didn't have that. The representatives from the FAA and Massport also attended. There are new Logan CAC members from Quincy, Randolph, and West Roxbury. The, Andy and I both reached out and communicated with them in an attempt to work alongside them to try to protect not only our community, but also theirs. The, as I mentioned, the FAA was represented at this meeting, Todd Friedenberg, who was also at the Stephen Lynch Forum, was there and he reported that, because so many people have mentioned that the planes seem lower and their data don't show that, that they're going back and looking at their data again to see if their data are correct. To me, it's a little bit, it causes me a little bit of concern if they don't have correct altitude data, but I'm glad that they're looking at it again. He mentioned that there will be some changes that they've considered from Lynch's meeting. But the most important thing that he mentioned was that the FAA funding for the Logan CAC will come to a halt as of September 30th of this year, whether or not the study is complete or not. So that's kind of the big news. I think the FAA is a little bit concerned about it continuing past then. They said that it's unusual for their funding to, to be appropriated this long and so, and I, Todd was also extremely frustrated by the lack of movement that this Logan CAC seems to have. Of course, part of the problem is they don't provide us any information to make decisions with, so there's really a lot of blockage here. But that was the, the most important information that we pulled from that meeting was that the funding is going to stop as of this September, the federal government's fiscal year ending September 30th of this year. There was no new information on the 4L RNAVs. The last information I got was in 2015 when Todd Friedenberg said that they thought that they would have information by the end of 2015. They don't. The, I wanted to mention that I think that there's, in the last few months, there's been a real surge of people working together on this problem and it does give me some hope. I, I don't want to say that we're on a path towards changing things, but I do think that there's reason to hope. Katie has been extremely supportive of this effort. This has all been on the heels of the great efforts from the Grassroots Group, who I think for a long time struggled a bit in isolation in trying to get this issue to the attention of the town. But I think we're together now and I especially appreciate Congressman Lynch's efforts. The, the new, there's a person in his office now, John Murphy, who's kind of taken over this issue. Bob Folks is continuing to follow it, but the, most of the work that's happening with this in the Boston office is now being done by John Murphy. The report that I gave you has some attachments, and this is partly the report that I was, that it's in draft form that I'm sharing with the Airplane Noise Advisory Committee. It has usage statistics, it has runway use restrictions, and I don't really plan on going over that unless you have specific questions that you'd like for me to answer. The only other thing I wanted to mention is that I do recommend that we look back at the letter that you recently wrote to the FAA, Massport, and the Logan CAC and consider follow-up to that.
Yeah, I think that's right. I know we passed that suggestion along to Town Council to take another look at that letter and some of the relief we requested.
That's it?
Any questions, anybody? Or?
Well, thank you for, yeah, good work here.
I had a chance to scan this, Cindy, but that's about all I had a chance to do.
Yeah, like I said, a lot of it is just, I want somebody else, you know, someday I may be six feet under and you're still battling this, the airplanes, and I'd like for somebody to have, I've had the, the privilege of having other CAC reps being very, previous CAC reps being very helpful to me. But if for some reason we're all gone, the town still needs to know what are the concerns. There's several concerns here, but like I said, it's, it's nothing that I, if I thought it's something that I, that you guys should act on, I would bring it up at this meeting. Right now, it's documented just for the sake of keeping track of these things.
And I guess the only thing I could add is, you know, because you mentioned, I think, a little bit in terms of still infighting amongst different members in different areas, you know, to get less noise here, more, you know, more noise there. I mean, until that stops and people start working together, you know, we're playing right into the FAA's hands. That's what they want to do, is just divide everybody and-
Oh, they love it when there's infighting and that's what they see a lot in this Logan CAC meeting. It's, it's, it's a difficult topic.
Right.
But there are a lot of people who want fairness. The, the problem that we have, I think, is that we've kind of started off in a place of overuse of, of planes over our town and so we're fighting to, to remove some of that and that means somebody else has to take it when they haven't been. So when you start off with an unfair slice of the pie, it's, we're in a more difficult position for, for many reasons.
The CAC meetings are definitely interesting meetings. And, you know, Cindy and Andy's gone to a few of these now and going over to be there for 6 o'clock on a, at Logan Airport on a weeknight, it's no fun to get in there.
It's not easy.
So it's, you know, we appreciate your going to the, and they're three-hour meetings then on top of it. And there's a lot of repeating of the same things that keep coming up and up, but probably not only within the meeting, but over the course of several meetings.
And also understanding that-
So, it's, you know, we appreciate your going to the, and they're three-hour meetings then on top of it. And there's a lot of repeating of the same things that keep coming up and up, but probably not only within the meeting, but over the course of several meetings.
And also understanding that the different parts of Milton are impacted in different ways.
Exactly.
Sometimes the burden gets taken off on one side, it can get pushed on the other. So, we're all on this for the same reasons. And as a team, to really alleviate the long-term burden as a whole.
Well, and make it fair. You know, it's just not fair for someone to be awakened at 5:15 in the morning for five or six days in a row. Someone called me to say that it was midterm or exam time for their high school students. And they were, you know, waking up at 5:00 in the morning. It's just, it's not right. It's a public health issue that I think we all can stand up against and are. So, I, like I say, I'm feeling hopeful. I don't want to give false hope to anyone to think that, you know, we're on the road to having less planes. But I do think we all know what we're up against.
Yeah, and I think we are all rolling in the same direction now.
Yeah.
With a lot of different interests in the town, in the Grassroots Group, in the committee, in the CAC. And that brings us into the next item on the agenda, which if I could maybe just mention a little bit about that. When I was at the CAC meeting, the initial, it was probably a 15 or 20-minute discussion of the Massport CAC at the beginning of the meeting. And as everyone knows, our current Massport CAC rep is Caroline Cancela, who's our Public Health Director. A lot of the communities, the ones that are affected the most, Paul, one of the Boston reps, the people who are on the Logan CAC, which has been in existence now for decades, in most cases, that existing CA rep is also the CAC rep on the new Massport CAC. CAC means a Community Advisory Committee. And this, the Massport one is really just getting started. As Caroline has told us, they've had trouble getting a quorum sometimes. They're just figuring out their bylaws. They're still getting organized. And they're going to have, there's probably going to be some overlap between the two CACs. I think the benefit of having the same person serving on both CACs is that you have the institutional knowledge built up. Cindy's got quite a bit of this institutional knowledge about the various flight paths, the RNAV system, the different issues that are involved. And I think it would make sense, and I think the discussion at the Logan CAC meeting really showed to me that it makes sense to have the Logan CAC rep serving as the Massport CAC rep to eliminate potential for something to be said at one meeting. And maybe it's not the most important thing, but in the long run, it turns out to be important and it doesn't get communicated. And it just, the current system that we have going forward would require two different people at these representing Milton, would really kind of require a lot of communication between the two of them, a lot of comparing notes. And I think we can eliminate some of that if we have one person serving on both. And there's also a possibility that some of the work, you know, no one really knows what the future of the Logan CAC is. At some point, that's probably going to wind down. And a lot of the work will transfer over. There's probably already some substantial overlap. So, the fact that many of the reps, they were talking about the Massport CAC, really indicated to me that we probably ought to be thinking about having Cindy serving as both. And at one of our prior meetings, I offered to try to help reconstitute the Anac and make some recommendations to this board. And one thing that I would recommend to us tonight, and I have talked with Caroline Cancela about it and also with Cindy about it, is that we make, that we appoint Cindy as our representative to not only the Logan CAC, but also the Massport CAC. Cindy's expressed her willingness to take that on. Caroline and I had a very good conversation. And she understands what the issues are in terms of the institutional knowledge from one really impacting the other committee and the overlap of the work. So, and the Board of Health has an awful lot on their plate. Substance abuse is a big issue for them right now. And to the extent I think that we can maybe take some of the airplane-related work off of the Public Health Director and focus on the opioid problem, I think that would be a good thing. So, I'm recommending to our board that we appoint Cindy as our Massport CAC rep. And again, Caroline was understood and was agreeable with making this change. And Cindy's willing to serve. Take on more time.
Caroline's got her notebook of material.
So, then I'll make a motion to appoint Cindy Christensen of 59 Collum Moore Street as Milton's representative to the Massport Community Advisory Committee to serve through October 2016.
And I will second the motion.
Okay, motion made, second. Any further discussion? Seeing not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you, Cindy.
And thank you also to Caroline for serving these first few meetings and for all of her efforts.
Absolutely. She's been, she's been very active and a real resource.
Yeah, I think I'll do another...
Anyways.
If we were a community that wasn't as affected in the way we are, it might make sense to ease the burden, have two different people. But right now, at least for the foreseeable future, we are one of the most affected communities.
And the Board of Health will still be involved.
Yes, they will.
In every capacity where it's needed.
Yes. So, thank you to both of our reps.
So, item 13 on the agenda is Board and Committee Appointment on the Airplane Noise Advisory Committee. Glad you can take it.
So, Sebastian Barbagallo, he applied several months ago. And I think we all met him when we went to the airplane meeting over the summer. At that point, we had appointed Jen Gune and Andy Schmidt to the committee. And there were no more open seats at that point. But Sebastian is still interested in serving. He, I think, would be a good resource for this committee and is willing to get involved and to help out. And I think we should also appoint Cindy as an ex officio member, which would mean that she wouldn't have to be at all of the meetings. But rather than the committee having to schedule a CAC report, if she's an ex officio member, she can just show up and sit at the table and take part in the discussion with the committee and have...
Ex officio voting, ex officio non-voting?
We didn't specify this in the draft motion. I'm not sure that it really, I don't, I would make her an ex officio voting member in case there's something that makes sense for her to vote on. But the idea would be that she wouldn't have to be at every one of the meetings and could just be there when it made sense for her to come in and talk with the committee.
Would that fill out that committee then?
No, there's one more, there's one or two more openings on it actually, based on the number of 11 that we initially selected.
So, this would make it 10?
Well, nine plus the ex officio, so, yeah, I guess, yeah, I guess we'd count her as 10.
Yeah, if it's voting, yeah, I think you would.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I move that we appoint Sebastian Barbagallo of 27 Otis Street to the Airplane Noise Advisory Committee and Cindy Christensen of 59 Collum Moore Street as an ex officio member of the Airplane Noise Advisory Committee, both to serve through July 2016.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made, second. Any discussion?
Just be cognizant of the town and, you know, the different dynamics and, you know, geographic locations that we, and I'm sure we have, looking at membership from different areas, you know.
I agree. I think, you know, I think we do have a couple of people...
Are you referring to the western side of town?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have Mike Andressino and Muna Killenback who are on the western side of town. There's one other person that I've spoken with who had indicated an interest, but that person wanted a little more time to think about it and check the frequency of the meetings and whether or not it's something that would fit into his schedule. So...
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, at the end of the day, they're all working as one Milton. That's the goal. But, you know, just to be cognizant of that.
Yep, I agree.
I agree.
Any further discussion? Seeing not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, item 14 is Board and Committee Appointments. Milton Partnership for Arts and Cultural Education.
I'll move to appoint Mara Downs of 41 Forthingham Street to the Milton Partnership for Arts and Cultural Education to serve through May of 2018.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? Seeing not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, item 15 is Board and Committee Appointment, Master Plan Implementation Committee.
I'll move that we appoint Michael Balf of 19 Lantern Lane, Elizabeth Miller of 15 Cape Cod Lane, and Richard Burke of 607 Pleasant Street to the Master Plan Implementation Committee to serve through July of 2016.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? These sound like all good appointments.
Mr. Chairman, these individuals were also appointed last evening by the planning board.
Good, okay. Okay, seeing no further discussion. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Town Administrator's Report.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to talk a little bit about the MMA Conference that we all attended Friday and Saturday this past week. I thought it was very informative. I thought the workshops were great. The Governor's Speech was enlightening. And it's nice to hear that we'll get some additional, hopefully, additional Chapter 78.
Yeah, well, both, 78 was up a little.
And unrestricted was up as well. But we haven't got the assessment number yet. So, we're still holding our numbers for budget purposes pretty steady. But I thought that was encouraging news. And, you know, as we go through the process, we'll wait to hopefully see that number firm up. But I thought the conference was very, very good. I went to a couple of interesting seminars. Went to the Cadillac, Trans Cadillac, the Affordable Care Act seminar, which was, will not be implemented till 2020. But I would tell you, hold on to your hats.
You don't want to hit that limit.
No, you don't.
It's going to be premiums over that limit. There'll be the 40% tax on it.
Yes.
But 40% of those premiums is, and the employees don't pay, the town pays.
Exactly.
It's like a luxury tax for the Red Sox or the Yankees.
Yes.
Same deal.
Exactly, exactly.
You don't want to be there.
No, you really don't. You really don't. I mean, as of right now, we're not. You know, we wouldn't be. But with the, you know, continued expansion of premiums and...
But I will say that the town has been very fortunate that we have had the line on our health insurance plans the past few years. You know, we've done a lot of work with educating our workforce. And I think that it's shown in the level of claims.
Yes, and because we're self-insured to that degree.
That's right.
It does help too in terms of...
Yeah, we maintain lower increases than a lot of the other groups have. I know Meyer, their health insurance increases have been mid-5% and 6% increases. So, we've been pretty fortunate.
Okay, Members' Reports, oh, Chairs' Report. I was going to actually, it said, think, talk about the MMA. You know, it was a good conference. I think the Governor's Speech was enlightening.
It really was.
You know, the, first of all, the amount of bipotistanship that seems to be on, at the State House and, you know, House and Senate right now is good. Everybody seems to be pretty much on the same page. There's a lot of, there's a lot of legislative reforms out there that are going to, hopefully if they pass, will lighten the burden for cities and towns in terms of streamlining some of the general laws, which...
Yes, those were very encouraging. I actually took a copy of those and I'll scan them and then forward them to you. Because some of those changes will be so helpful to cities and towns.
Yeah. One of the big ones is the unrestricting of the 3% rule.
That's right.
So, right now, you know, what the last, last 30 days...
Of the fiscal year.
The first 15.
First 15 of the fiscal year.
You can, you can move, but, you know, you have...
Between line items.
Between line items and between budgets. But only to the extent of 3%.
3% of your total bottom line.
Right, budget. So, this would just open it up unlimited.
Yeah, that'll be nice.
It could be.
Very helpful.
Yeah. Yeah, the other report that I listened to that sounded interesting was a talk was, they had people from, talking about construction projects and kind of the process. And apparently, if you have a construction project in Massachusetts that exceeds $10 million, you need a construction manager. You know, you have to hire one or you can use an in-house person, but they have to be licensed. They have to take an additional test at the state level to be able to do it. And one of the people giving it was one of those licensed people. You know, we're kind of new at this. We're looking at, I don't know how many years down the road, but we're looking at two construction projects, you know, fire stations and DPW facility. So, I did talk to the person, the person who is the construction manager. And he's a selectman, I think, in, I want to say Norwell or one of those towns down there. He gave a good talk. And I invited him to come up here and just kind of sit down and chat with us about best practices.
Great.
You know, at what point in time do you start thinking about doing things? You know, when do you appoint your construction manager or, you know, that kind of thing. So, hopefully, we'll touch base with him pretty soon and have him into one of our meetings.
That's a good idea.
Members' Reports.
I just want to thank, you know, many members of the DPW Department for, you know, I know we didn't have a big snowstorm the other day, but they did a really good job, you know. And a lot of times it goes unnoticed, the little things, you know. Sometimes people do have complaints, and as they should, on certain things that may have or should have gotten done. But for the most part, you know, I thought that they kept the streets wide. I felt like they salted and sanded properly. And the sidewalks with that new piece of equipment worked out very well. I got a lot of feedback from a lot of residents on how happy they were.
Yep.
So, I think that that's, I think that the guys that are out there working hard, you know, during the nighttime and putting that extra attention into the detail really pays off. And they should be commended for that.
Yeah, and I, just on that note too, I, there was a, I did notice a Facebook post on, I don't know if it was the Milton, whichever one it was, about sidewalks in the business district not being plowed and why didn't the town do it? And I guess we should make it clear that, I mean, the town does a limited amount of sidewalk plowing in terms of just, you know, streets or sidewalks in proximity to schools.
Correct.
But it can't clear sidewalks all over the town.
And there are some limitations, as we know now, with Elliott Street, where it is such a narrow path that it makes it very difficult, as much as it is needed because it is a commuter area where there are many children in a dense area. But it's a difficult place.
Many cities and towns, if they don't require everybody to clean their own sidewalk, at least require businesses to keep their, Quincy does.
They find people, and the city of Boston does as well.
Yeah, Boston's very aggressive about it. Quincy's very aggressive about their business district, that the business owners are required to clear their own sidewalks. And, you know, that should really hold true for the square as well. But I don't think we have a pie law that requires it though.
No, but I think we could ask the Town Administrator or her designee to speak at the Chamber of Commerce or the applicable businesses over in the square. And, you know, just...
Because I agree, it is dangerous to have people walking out in the street.
Start that way, bring it to their attention. I agree. The only thing, I'm sorry, we finished? The only thing I wanted to report, I know we're taking up the Town Administrator Search process again next week. It's not on the agenda for tonight, obviously. But in the last couple of days, I've spoken with two former library trustees who took part in the search committees. One of them was on both search committees, the one that selected Phil McNulty and then Will Adamsick, Jean Boylan, and Mary Reif-Hiss. Both of them have a lot of experience in the search process. Mary Reif-Hiss has a good background in executive search and executive compensation. They walked me through a little bit what the process was for the library directors, which is a little bit different than what we've been talking about. It's a longer process to start with. And there's a few more steps involved. And the committee in those cases came up with a list of qualifications after they did some surveying of the community and put together the job description to be advertised. And I think that that might be something that we should be looking at and considering. It sounds like it's a different approach than was taken by prior boards of selectmen to the last two Town Administrator searches. And maybe there's something that we can learn from the library process. So, I was going to ask the Town Administrator to send us, if you have it. I was told the Library Search Committee may have turned over the file that they had for their most recent search process. And if we could get the paperwork so that we could take a look at it. I'd like to see it and I'm just asking to send it to the board.
There could be some, some information in there. It could definitely be advantageous to us in this search.
Yeah, I think so. So, and we can talk more about it next week. But if we could get the paperwork, we can at least see what the process was and what the differences were there that may be helpful to us in this process.
Okay, sure. Citizen Speak responses. We only have one person that says to speak tonight.
I don't have any response.
I don't have any other. Future General Adams? Anything?
I just want to, you know, follow up on the pilot program and something that Anne Marie and I, it's because we've been so busy with special town media coming up and all the other things that have been on our plate. But it's something that I don't want people to think is forgotten. It's something that, you know, I've met with Chairman Bennett and Bill Henderson. And I'm looking for... and I'm looking forward to really kind of tackling that and come out with some good policies and, and moving forward on that. So it's something that I think that, you know, I'd like to do, get going over the next, you know, month or two.
All right. So I will propose a motion, well, first of all, I guess anybody can propose a motion, to recess the board select meeting to hold a meeting of the trustees of the Governor-Stoughton Trust Fund.
Second that.
Mr. Men seconded. Any further discussion, say no, all's in favor.
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, and I'll again further propose a motion to...
Convene?
Convene, yeah, this is to adjourn. To, yeah, convene or to open the meeting of the Governor-Stoughton Trust. And let's see, we have...
Is Bill here for this?
Bill is supposed to be here, yes.
He just...
Reed, do you want a clock? How you doing?
Good evening. Should I wait for...
Good evening. He can come on up. May as well. He'll be here in a second, I hope.
Been sitting there all night, and then... For the record, my name is Reed Blute, represent Polty Homes, and, you know, thank you for, ladies and gentlemen, for giving me some time this evening. Essentially, I would like to give you a brief updated, a couple of items. Relative to the status of our plan going forward for the project. So currently, we're in the process of preparing our plans to submit to the planning board. However, there are a couple of items that I wanted to discuss with the trustees to get a little bit of direction and an idea as to what your feeling might be on them. But by, by further means of update, we are in the process of, as they say, finalizing the plan to submit to the planning board. There's a couple of open items, one of which is some additional testing that we need to do with soil testing on the site. And we have made a proposal to the Conservation Commission, and they have scheduled a site walk to, to take a look in person of the route to the testing spots. Yes. So that's scheduled for the 6th, and if we're able to get a determination, then it's our intention to complete that soil testing by the end of February, and...
Is the soil testing in conjunction with stormwater, or is it...
Stormwater basins, yes, yes.
Okay.
So we have to, to back up a step. In order to complete the plan to submit, we have to locate our stormwater basins on the plan, and prior to being able to confirm exactly where they're going to go to perform the function of handling stormwater, infiltrating the stormwater, we have to perform soil tests for that soil in that particular location, which previously we didn't know what that location would be. So now that we know our proposed location, we have to confirm the soil.
Gotcha.
So hopefully, that will progress fairly soon, again, with the idea of completing the testing if we're allowed to proceed with it by the end of next month, and that will complete that component for the plan. There's a couple of other components of the plan that I wanted to speak to the trustees about tonight, and if I may, I have a little graphic that if I can pass out, I can chat with you about for a minute.
Okay.
So we can just pass, one, two, three, and then there's a couple for this.
Thank you.
So, just for orientation, this is that soil testing plan that we have filed. Do you want to put that up on this, on...
Yes.
Yes. I have this, I have this image that you can put it up on the...
I don't think you're going to be able to do it, it's too big, Bill.
So whilst she's working on that, I can just orient you...
Okay.
As to what's what. So as you're looking at it, this is actually, as I say, the plan that had been submitted to the Conservation Commission for the soil testing. So there's a lot of information on here that's not going to pertain to my questions, but I selected this because it's, you know, it's being utilized now, and it actually does show the location of the property, it shows the location of the existing buildings, and what I've done is I've highlighted this green shape in the, sort of the middle of the page. That's the proposed roadway. So over on the upper left-hand side, the green intersects with a pinkish reddish road, and that's Unquity Road. So that little intersection is one thing I want to talk about in a moment, in that upper left-hand corner. And then, just jumping over to the pink on the right-hand side of the page, kind of just under the title block on the upper right, that is the, the corner of the property, and the pink coming into the corner of the property is the end of Governor-Stoughton Lane. So it essentially turns into the driveway once it comes on the property, and then sweeps around, again, as we're looking at it towards the left. And then, I highlighted several of the buildings and labeled them. So I apologize if people call them different names than I've used, but I picked these names off of a previous photographic application that was submitted. So I have some photographs, and I wanted them to, to coordinate with the buildings.
Photographing to me.
So as you're coming over, I've labeled, number one is the main arms house, number two is the animal shelter, again, both in yellow, number three, the barn, sometimes called a stable, and number four, in a little kind of orangey color, the men's arms house. And then number five, down at the bottom by the green circle, is, in blue highlight, is number five, the pest house, or I guess that's short for pestilent house. But what I've also done, and I'll, I'll hand these out as well, is, these are some photographs of those five buildings. So if you haven't been out there recently, again, I'll do one, two, three down this side, two down this side. If you haven't been out there recently, I just wanted a reminder as to what the five buildings looked like, you know, here's some photographs. So, again, in general, number one is on, they correspond with the site photographs that I just handed out. So the main arms house, number one, that's intended to remain on the town property for future. As yet, I'm not aware of the use, but I'm sure they'll be, they'll be put to good use in the future. Number two, the animal shelter, you know, I believe there's some thoughts that that may be relocated, but for right now and for the discussion I want to have this evening, I'm assuming that's going to stay there, and, you know, it'll be dealt with however the trustees and the, and the animal folks decide to deal with it. And number three, the barn, and it's called farm stable on the site photographs, again, that's, you know, it's being held up by some, some two-by-sixes now.
Yep.
But for purposes of my questions here this evening, I'm assuming that's just going to stay as it is for the time being. Then when you get to number four, the arms house, the men's arms house, and again, there's some photos of that here. That's really what I want to, one of the items I want to ask the board's feelings on, and then number five, the pest house, shown in blue is the last couple of pages of the photographs. So my, let me jump back, since we've just been talking about the buildings, let me ask a couple of questions and see if I can get a sense of the board's feelings on, first of all, the, number five, the pest house. It's, it's our, we, we would be, well, it needs to be relocated. So the pest house is, is in a spot where it has to be moved. So there's essentially two ways of doing it. One way is to raise the building, which, you know, we'd certainly be able and willing to do. And the second alternative is to relocate it, and there's been some discussions about relocating it on-site, preferably, and there's, and we'd be willing and able to relocate it as well. And the, one of the obvious sites that we looked at in the field is between number one and number two, the main arms house and the animal shelter, there's a flat spot there in between the two structures, which seemed to be a reasonable place. If indeed the decision was made to relocate the pest house, that would be, you know, a good potential place to put it. So one of my questions is, and I'll ask, I'll put through my questions, and then we can talk about it if you don't mind. So one of my questions is, would the board, the trustees, favor raising of the pest house, or moving it to a site to be agreed upon, which, you know, seems to be most, most sensibly between those, those two buildings, one and two, right now? So that would be one question. A second question would be number four, the men's arms house. We would propose to take that men's arms house building and convert it into two affordable units, and that is something that was originally, some thought was put into that originally when the zoning was, was prepared and adopted for this property, because it makes allowances for converting a, a structure such as this into two affordable units. And I want to take the opportunity here tonight to come and ask the trustees if, if that seemed like something that you would be amenable to doing, amenable to having us do, and if so, then we can, you know, again, talk about that a little more in the future.
Mm-hmm.
So that would be the second question that has to do with these two, with the buildings, per se. And the third question has to do with the intersection in the top-left between the proposed kind of green-colored road here and Unquity Road. And we have had several meetings with the DCR about the, the approval of the intersection, and most recently, we mailed them in November, and they've, they've asked for a few things, which we're in the process of providing gathering for them. But one of the things they asked for is the, the reason why it's necessary for this proposed road to intersect with an access from Unquity Road as opposed to another way. They prefer to have, you know, new proposed roads, use other alternatives rather than tying into Unquity Road. So we explained to them that our agreement with the trustees and our purchase and sale agreement restricted us from utilizing Governor-Stoughton Lane as a means of access other than emergency access only. And we also explained that technically, our property won't but Governor-Stoughton Lane because the section where the four buildings are now will continue to be town property, and the lane stops at the, at the property line there. So my, I guess my third request is if the, the board will be willing to, to draft some kind of a correspondence to the DCR that would essentially say that the only means of access that the development that's proposed would have or be allowed to have is access with Unquity Road. So, in other words, there's a restriction and impracticability, impractical, well, it's impractical to utilize for a number of reasons Governor-Stoughton Lane, not the least of which is the condition of it and the slope and the width and, or lack of width and things like that.
Right, right.
So, so those are the three main things that I wanted to chat with you about.
Okay.
And see if, you know, and see if we could work out some kind of direction, because all three of these, answers to all three of these questions really play into the proposal that we're bringing together the final components of our plan, preliminary plan to submit to the planning board. So we want to make sure that we're making as accurate a statement as we can when we go to the planning board, when we outline, first and foremost, the road will intersect with Unquity, and the pest house will be relocated, you know, to a spot perhaps up between, you know, one and two, and the men's arms house would be proposed to be converted into two affordable units.
Okay.
And those would all be part of our proposal, so naturally, since you all as trustees play a significant role in, in all of this, the whole project, the evolution of the project, and these, answers to these questions, you know, I want to, to chat with you about them and see what your thoughts and feelings were.
Okay.
I mean, should we start with the pest house, or go...
Well, let's start with the whole, first of all, because, you know, powerpoint we have is, is, I think as, as trustees, I think we, we agree that we'd love to see the historic buildings, you know, survive and get restored and repurposed, and to the extent that that's economically feasible to do. I think we've all said that. We really haven't thought much about a master plan for, for the four acres, and I think primarily due to the fact that we didn't know whether it was going to remain four acres, or whether Polty was going to need any makeup land, because that was part of the purchase and sale agreement was, you know, should you not be able to get the 23 homes within the parcel that, you know, that could be makeup land from our four acres. So, other than, I think, other than we've dabbled a little bit into the condition of those properties out there, but I don't know that we have to any great degree yet.
You mean, discussed them?
Yeah, well, discussed them, and we had, who's, somebody's going to take a look at them, Bill, right?
Well, we've been out there for sidewalks, but just before, I mean, we had the historical society in, with, I don't think you were on the board at that time, maybe it was before then, so they came in to meet with us about some ideas for those houses, but I'm not, I don't...
Right, but we haven't done anything beyond that.
That's really the extent of the discussion.
We haven't done anything beyond that.
Two architects...
Walk through and take a look at the condition.
The men's house.
Yes.
I'm sorry, to the, the main house.
Yes.
Just the main house, not to the men's house, not to the barn.
Barn, right.
And not to the pest house.
Right.
I think our thought all along was that we would move the pest house to a site within the four acres. That hasn't been determined, the exact location hasn't been determined, because we haven't done the four-acre master plan.
Correct.
The, the main house becomes an issue of how many units would we want to put in there, what would we want to put in there, and could it be preserved?
Correct.
The men's house became the same kind of issue. It's, if you took the men's house and replicated the addition that's on the, on the right-hand side and put it to the left-hand side, could you take and create two units out of that building? I think that's what Polty has looked at, and that's what they've come up with, that, you know, one, it's historic preservation, and two, it gives you two units towards your SHI.
And I guess if we want historic preservation, you'd like to keep it as much in the location that the building is...
Yes, so it's in the same spot.
Oh, yeah.
It's the same building ultimately, and it, also, it's two affordable units that are owned by the trust, so you're continuing something on that particular land, so you...
So, so, I guess that being said, you know, first of all, the concept of leaving the men's house where it is and having it basically rehabbed and turned into two units by... Men's House where it is and having it basically rehabbed and turned into two units by Polte for no cost, that's number one.
I guess the drawback to that is then it leaves other buildings in the condition they were in. And you may... There's an argument, and other people have made this argument, that the historical building should be developed as part of a common plan and a scheme. And it's possible that there may be a different development for that site that would work and that may or may not involve two affordable units in the Men's Arms House. But, Mr. Chairman, I want to ask a more fundamental question because, Mr. Blue, you presented us with three questions tonight. This is... I hadn't heard anything about the town farm in many months because we really haven't had this on our plate in quite a while. Have you had any... Have you given any thought to going into the planning board for preliminary discussion about your plan to find out what... Try to vet out some issues preliminarily, going in to talk with the planning board before you file an application, to try to vet out some of the issues? I'm thinking the buffer zone issue. I'm thinking issues like that that were reopened. Because I don't know that I can really give any... I think the only thing we can do is take these questions under advisement tonight. I'm certainly not prepared to give my thoughts on them because I really don't have enough information. I'd like to know why Polte hasn't yet talked to the planning board.
Well, the, you know, the most frank answer is we've been preparing the... So, we want to submit the plans and get in front of the planning board and start the public hearing process. That's the roadway that's, you know, that's lined out to follow and that's what we're prepared to do. So, that's what we've been working on is putting together all of the engineering that's required for the plant, the supplemental, the engineering plans, the application.
I guess the question is, what about going into the planning board before you have your application completely filled out and you have all your engineering work done to give them sort of... And Bill can speak to how frequently this is done, but I think other developers have gone and presented conceptual plan at first and gotten some initial feedback from the planning board. Bill, is that... Can you speak to that process and how that may have played out?
Sure.
And some other developments? I think that could be helpful here.
Polte actually has been before the planning board for the preliminary, preliminary discussion.
When was that?
The issue of the buffer still is one that's hanging out there. But before you can design what your interior is going to look like, you have to do the access part of how you're going to get into the site. They've met with DCR. They've met with MIPA. It's the access onto Unquity Road that is going to require access across DCR land. Because of the 1894 taking statute, there are issues in there that DCR has to actually... There is a precedent that it's... They cannot stop you from going across a greenway. That's there. But in order to get there, there's... They have to take down X amount of trees. And because of that X amount of trees, that's triggering MIPA. There's also a stream that they're working their way around. There's two series of wetlands in there that they're meandering around. How do you get into the site? And before you can go and plan where you're going to place out the road, you have to address the issues of DCR. You have to go through MIPA. You have to do the environmental part of it. Then I know where my road is. When I know where my road is, I can then figure out where my houses are. Then I know, did I meet the buffer issue inside? But I need to know where the road is.
All right. So, I understand that. But when were you into the planning board? Was it recently?
No.
So, how long ago were we talking?
You were.
Was that an actual conceptual plan of the 23 houses? The design that, you know, that we've seen it's been many months, but has that been before the planning board?
I think that was the one that was before the planning board.
Yeah, it was.
That one that...
It's conceptual. Obviously very conceptual. It wasn't a...
The buffer one. And it was concepts.
But that... The concept was that the road was going to go up to Unquity Road, right?
Yes.
Because that's all governed by the contract, really.
And that's why we had to go and put in the zoning for... We changed our cluster bylaw that would allow this road to get this long so that for a cluster had to have a road that was 600 feet. This one, I think, is 1,800 square feet. And the issue is, there is a... There's an emergency exit for here for public safety vehicles only.
Mm-hmm.
That goes back out to Governor Stoughton Lane. But it's for emergency vehicles only. Everything inside is the same plan that you saw before. They're just working on the issue of, can we put the road in this position? Since you saw that plan, the reconfiguration, this road has been reconfigured from here to here because of the slope, because of the ledge.
And I guess the other thing that everybody's saying is, and what I heard Reed saying too, is to go into the planning board with anything, we need some specifics...
Have to pin it to a spot.
First of all, it's a cluster zone. It needs two affordable units. The affordable units aren't going to be on-site, so they have to be off-site. So, if they're not going to be here, then where? So, they need to eventually nail that down.
But there are... You know, there is a school of thought out there that, first of all, that could be another site.
Yeah. That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying. If not here, then where?
And it may be that the historical houses, that you may be better off developing them with a... As part of some kind of a plan for the whole...
Correct. I think we're all on agreement in that. I think we're all on agreement in that.
So, I guess the question is, where did that leave with the planning board? And why can't you go back in and have a further conceptual discussion with the planning board? Doesn't sound like there was... Or you tell me, or Mr. Blue. I mean, was there any feedback from the planning board at that stage or was there any...
Well, my recollection is that the planning board was asking for more definitive decisions and we just didn't have them. And we've been working for many months now trying to pull together the decisions and it's... And there are a lot involved and they are, you know, interconnected. And the access way up DCR, we've, you know, is the key one. And there's a little bit of catch-22 with the DCR. They like to see the plan... The first thing they say was, is your plan approved? Well, no, it's not approved because it's based on the access to Unquity Road. So, you have to tell us that we can access through an Unquity Road.
Let's talk about that one first because that one seems to be... First of all, we're already saying in the purchase and sale agreement, it has to be Unquity Road.
Why do the purchase and sale agreement speaks to it? Have they seen the PNS agreement?
Who's they...
DCR.
DCR, yes.
And they're still asking for a letter despite...
Saying that there is no other place to put that access other than there. You know, than other than Unquity Road that it cannot go out to Governor Stoughton or into...
It's all contingent on the 1894 taking statute. And when Polte met with DCR, DCR did have deputy counsel there. And it was his feeling that there were other ways. Well, the other ways are Governor Stoughton Lane, which has a 30-foot width. That isn't sufficient for vehicles today. The makeup of that road was such that it was early 1700s and it's just not conducive to being able to bring the vehicles that we bring today up that road in the numbers that a development like this would do.
And trying to get access back out to Canton now going downhill like...
Right. Because, one, you've got ledge. Two, you've got, you know, you've got elevations that just don't work for today's roads. The other is, the precedent's already been set with Quistler Brook and with Unquity Road Extension on the other side. Both of these are within the 1894 taking for the MDC Parkway's system. There's more that you can go back and look at, the legal documents that Fox versus the Town of Milton Planning Board, where Fox tried to take and put a... He wanted to put a subdivision, which was 100 apartments out on the Ponson Valley Parkway, and he was going to cross the greenway. And the planning board said, no, because you don't have access across that piece. And it went back that, yes, according to the 1894 taking, yes, you do. They cannot preclude you from crossing what they took. So, they being the state or MDC. So, again, we're doing the same thing. All we're doing is taking... They cannot landlock you and they cannot landlock you across property that they took from the original parcel.
So, the biggest problem here then is just conservation, tree removal and the meter.
Well, it is the trees. On the plan that you see, at Unquity Road, you see there's three markings there. Those markings are where the test pits would go. In order for Polte to dig the stormwater holes, they have to apply to DCR for a roadway permit from DCR. And there are, I think it's 70-something trees that have to come down should they want to take and create that road. So, they have to number and identify every single one of those trees. And the trees and the holes and the layout of the road are all in what DCR is going to look at on a permit, should they create a permit. Part two to that is, because of the number of trees you just took down, you just triggered MIPA. MIPA wants you to file an ENF, an environmental notification form. Here we go again. We have to go back and make the same explanation, why are there so many trees? Where does this come from? And what's the historic component? And it all goes back to 1894. At the same time, it goes back to the deed and also under MIPA will come mass historic. So, if there's a way that you're doing historic preservation within the property, you've got another, you know, you've got mass historic signed off on your ENF. So, there's a lot of different pieces that are all interconnected. I know that Polte is putting together an ENF now. An ENF, putting together is probably the easy part here. The review process will probably take, you know, three to four months. The DCR part, I don't know.
So, I guess the question is, can we do that much or do we have to take the rest under advisement for right now?
I think we'd have to talk with town council about it. I mean, clearly, he can write a letter stating what the contract says, but it's been a while since probably any of us has looked at the contract.
Right.
So, I think we should take it under advisement to the extent that we want to talk with town council about it.
All right. Yeah, I agree. Okay. So, just take the whole thing under advisement?
Well, that's my view. I don't know whether the town council has questions or...
I have questions, but I think that, you know, if you're not prepared, if we as a group feel that it's best to take it under advisement and focus on this component first and then come back, I think that that makes sense.
Yeah, and I'm fine with that. I don't think we should take it under advisement for too, too long, though. I think, in fairness to Polte, they do want to move forward and some of this thing.
I mean, you brought up three questions and I have questions related to those, but I, I mean, you know...
I mean, try to answer them if I can.
Yeah. Well, then I'll get right into it. I took some notes and, you know, I'm going to start with the Pest House.
Sure.
So, what is your plan with the Pest House? Are you, you know, planning to just move it or make it habitual?
I have the same question, yeah.
You know, is it, you know, you're talking water, sewer, electric runoff management, et cetera. What would you be paying for specifically? Because when it is habitual, it has to meet codes and, you know, would it be something that is kind of back up and running?
Pest House is already occupied right now.
But it's got a...
If it doesn't meet code, I have no idea.
Right.
It is occupied, though. You know, so that's...
So, I think conceptually, just to answer your question, is we're happy to move it if that's the way that all the thoughts are going, to move it. So, our concept of moving it is, you know, without having a lot of study because we're just talking about this really with our partners here, the owners, for the first time. But the concept would be, if you say, gee, we really would like to keep that Pest House and, you know, we'll agree on a spot where it should go, you know, on the site, maybe that obvious spot. But our concept had been essentially, pick it up, carry it over there, you know, put in a new foundation because it would have to have a foundation, and set it down and, you know, we hadn't really thought through it, but we'd have to figure out a way to hook up water and sewer and utilities to it, but they're all right there now.
Yeah, right there at the end of it.
Within a, you know, few yards.
Yeah, I was just thinking about whether or not it would be renovated, you know?
Renovation was not part of our thought. Renovation was targeted to the affordable units in the Men's Arms House if, again, if you all, as the owners of that property, decided that's what you thought would be a good thing to do. But as far as the Pest House, it was basically just to move it from the middle of the development, frankly, to a place out of the way as opposed to, frankly, raising it, which was kind of the first option or assumption. And, you know, there may be other structures that get raised too, which, again, is reflected in our contract, but it's up to trustees as the owners to decide and tell us that you want, say, for example, the barn or, for example, the animal shelter after study and whatnot. You make a decision to raise it. I mean, we are...
The animal shelter is not historic.
We're obligated to do that for you. So, you know, we realize that. So, that was all the thought, frankly, and not a lot went into the Pest House as far as details. It's just, if you could kind of have magic wand and you could move it over there, it's... Everything stays the same. I mean, we're not, as, you know, someone is occupying it, so... But we weren't going to go through it all and re-drywall and repaint and put in new fixtures or anything like that.
You know, with, let's say that we do get approval from the DCR, you know, and you start testing. What do you perceive the impact to be to any of the neighbors?
Nothing.
Okay.
I mean, we've tested many times out there already with, as far as I know, no impact to anyone. I mean, you can't even tell where we drove in with the equipment the last time we did testing.
Was the question, when they do the stormwater testing, what will the impact be to the waters? If you look at the... There's two holes above the animal shelter. There is, right now, that whole area is just pucker brush for about 100 feet after the animal shelter. Those two holes, the people who live in that building that's right above it, at Quistler Brook, will see that machine there. But they're going to go figure out where the water table is. So, the hole will go down probably 10 to 12 feet. When they dig the hole, they'll fill it back in afterwards. Two years ago, they came in and they dug with an excavator over on the Countryside Lane property line. You can't find those holes right now. But a year ago, they came in with a boring machine. They actually drilled a hole about that big. You can't find those holes right now. That was a smaller machine. This is a bigger track machine. You're going to see where the tracks go. If they do this in the wintertime, come springtime, the only reason you'll see that is because in the area that goes through the pucker brush, it won't be... The pucker brush will be all cut down. Realistically, if I'm working in the animal shelter, I really don't want that brush right up against the back of the building because that brings in... That brings in the animals I really don't want up against... Up against the dog runs. So, that's a good thing. And also, that's part of your open space for the four acres that you have. So, you do want to see the open space, not necessarily have that brush that just... That is the name of a pucker brush, but you... If you're a rabbit, you're getting through it. If you're a coyote, you might get through it. You and I aren't going through that stuff. The... I know there's some stuff on the... Mr. Mulligan's, right by Mr. Mulligan's driveway. No trees will come down in that particular area, but the holes will be there. As much as there is a... They're planning on digging a hole to find water. In that particular area, they're thinking more about ponding because it's a higher area and they don't want to take and put a hole. They know where the water is because they can see it from Mr. Mulligan's property. So, they may just wind up doing some type of ponding area there. They're digging, but they're more or less testing what the soils are.
Bill, what does that mean? They're going to do a ponding area? Can you explain that?
There'd be a burn put around it and the water could then settle within that area.
See how quickly it kind of goes into the soil?
That won't affect his water table at all?
No. If anything, this will keep water from going to him. It'll be sinking in this way. It'll be sinking in this way.
And that's just during the time of the testing? That's not something that would remain?
This is an upland area anyways, up where they're planning that stuff. It's close enough to Mr. Mulligan's buffer zone that they did make mention of it to the Concom, but again, they're not digging a twelve-foot hole on that site, because there's no need for it.
To Katie's point, Bill, this berm thing is just a temporary thing.
No, the berm would be permanent, because it's a stormwater system.
Okay, so this would be just a...
But that won't be once it's constructed, right?
Right, and then it would be...
Talking about the testing.
No, the berm is going to wind up being, you know, a couple of feet high. The whole thing will be grassed and as you look at it, you probably won't know why it's there. It's a stormwater system that, it's like rain gardens. The holes...
...the very children are permanent, because I don't know exactly what you're talking about, but it's not...
Those black dots up there? As you move over to the countryside lane, you move down to the ninety-degree hook in the road, there are three holes here. That gray that you see on the plan, this gray point right here, that actually is a rock and they're actually moving it around. That's a rock that's as big as a house. It's also, this, that would be on the upland side that they're talking about putting in one of those stormwater basins. As you move down the hill, moving towards Unquity Road, there's two more systems, which are these two. And they're, they're looking to see if they can add more water in that area, what will it do to the, to the wetland system that's there now? Can they take and do that? There was some discussion at the Concom meeting that it's a drumlin. You probably don't want to take the drumlin out. They want permission to look at it, doesn't mean they're going to dig the hole. The engineer is going back and work on it, that maybe he doesn't have to. Maybe he can use the one that's a little bit lower down.
Bill, just a clarification, when you say add more water, you're talking about redirecting water on this?
No. What they're doing is, this is a wetland and what you see here, and there's another wetland here, if you took out the drumlin, you have the potential to join the two wetlands together, thereby you'd have more water. But the issue is, this is a small drumlin. It's a hill, small hill. You take it out or you leave it in? It's a, it's a natural feature that, they may want to leave it alone. They want to get in, look at what the soils are, see how far down those soils are. Is that a rock or is that literally a drumlin that they could actually move? Concom would prefer that they leave the drumlin in place and make the other two holes that are closer to the property line, make them a little bit bigger. So they'll look at that during the modeling. They have to find out where groundwater is. They expect to hit groundwater about eight feet. They don't expect it to be up in the first four. You do see the slope, you see that green dotted, the green arrows going across, you can see how steep that property is, which is taking the water off of that hill and it's coming to the road. They have to take the water off the road and put it somewhere and that, it's going into that area. And you have to make sure you don't flood out Unquity Road, you don't flood out that small wetlands just downstream.
Okay, I mean, I kind of agree with Katie, it would probably best to take under advisement. But like I said before, you know, we should be at least a little bit attuned to Polte's need to go forward with it, so we should try and do something as soon as we can, that's all.
I understand that, but this is the first time we're hearing these questions. So on the issue of the Men's Arms House and the two affordable units there, I think we're going to want to talk to the historical commission about, it's kind of a grand scheme for this, four acres.
Yeah, I'd like to see a master plan. I mean, we really haven't discussed it, but...
No, we haven't. That's the thing. So, you know, Mr. Blute is here asking us whether we'd want to, I guess your question is would we support converting the Arms House into two affordable units? And the answer, I mean, my honest answer to that is I don't know, because I, that would leave other buildings that we would have to find, the trustees and probably with some input from the historical commission would need to address, what are we going to do with the other buildings? Otherwise, we have two affordable units surrounded by buildings that are falling down. So what's the big plan for...
And with the Women's Arms House and...
And the barn, yeah.
And the barn, I mean, we have to necessarily look at it, but it's questionable if the barn's savable or not. The animal shelter probably is not, you probably wouldn't want to save it.
But the husband talked about replicating the barn. I mean, different people in town who are very interested in this project have different ideas, so I think we should, I think, I think it's more important.
The main Arms House, you'd certainly want to, I mean, from a historic standpoint, want to save it. The Men's Arms, you'd want to, you know, whether it, and you really wouldn't want to probably move it from where it is, because that kind of also destroys the historic nature.
It'd have to be deed to perpetuity. If you're going to make it a...
It belongs to the trust.
So, yeah, I mean, it's going to be responsible for the sale, or future sales, though.
If it belonged to the trust...
The trust would be responsible.
You don't have to sell them, you can rent them. It belongs to the trust.
I think the issue about the Unquity Road, the contract speaks to that. So we could talk with town council. That's probably an easier question.
That's the easier one of the two, yes.
Have a letter written up if we, if we want to get on that road as to what the contract actually says on that point. But the other two really require a little more thought and input from, I think, from other people.
Yeah, I guess all I'm saying is, yeah, maybe we should get that discussion moving, that's all.
I agree.
I mean, I think we're all in agreement, we'd like to save the buildings if we can.
Yes.
Excuse me. I want to know if we can set up a meeting with the neighbors before you perform or make a decision on it, stuff to us put forward here tonight?
A meeting with the neighbors with respect to...
So we can have our opinion, click it back to the justice and the medical...
Okay, I mean, if it's a meeting about our four...
Just like Polte has a plan.
Sure, I mean, if it's a meeting about our four acres or a meeting about the Polte project. I mean, I'll leave it up to the other two trustees. Right now, the project itself is going to the planning board and is going to public hearings there, so it's really not, at this point, a selectmen issue. The only thing that is a selectmen issue in the purchase and sale agreement is whether the final design meets the, meets the conditions of the purchase and sale agreement, and that is up to the building commissioner to make that determination before he issues a building permit, so.
But isn't there, like, the four acres we're giving back to the trust, is that correct?
It wouldn't be given back, the trust has retained four acres.
It's a whole process.
Yeah, the trust has retained the four acres.
So Polte is proposing to build twenty tree houses, right?
Correct.
And have to meet a ten percent affordability?
Correct.
Which is tree houses?
Well, it's twenty-three, so it would be two houses.
Well, it's twenty, it's two point three, right?
Right, if it's two point five, it would be three houses.
So you were running it down? Is that how it...
Twenty-three is two.
Yeah, twenty-three is two.
Oh, sorry.
Twenty-three is two, you know, but that's of...
You should come up to the town.
Frank, if you want, and we don't want to spend a lot of time, but if you'd like to come up, because nobody can hear you when you're talking. Nobody can hear you when you're talking on TV, so our TV people are going nuts.
Sorry, Frank Mulligan, one twenty governor's department, Lynn and Tom Meaton member as well. But getting back to the four acres and the twenty-three houses, it's ten percent of the twenty-three houses, which is two new houses that will go back as part of the ten percent. And I would propose to do, I think that's sixteen hundred square feet in that building. Is that correct?
I don't know.
I don't know what you're saying.
I don't know?
No? I don't know.
Well, my point is, like, it's a small amount and a very low return for the trust to take for the affordable aspect of two units of brand-new houses.
Right, and again, that is also a plan, because it's got to meet the zoning, it's got to meet the cluster zoning and the planning board has to...
I understand that, but I think, like, the trustees could negotiate a better deal here and get more units done over, you know, at least the main...
Hang on a second. We certainly have that discussion.
Like, and Bill talked about having a master plan for that four acres, and I'd like to know what's going on with that. I want to know...
Now, that's legitimate, yeah, I mean, in terms of, that has an impact on the neighborhood, I agree.
Katie suggests getting a plan together, I think that's a good idea. Like, getting something for the planning board and stuff, and I agree, I think that's a...
I don't know if it would be for the planning board, because...
Well, I propose that...
Well, the difficulty here is, you know, we thought this was kind of moving to the planning board several months ago, so I haven't looked at this contract in a long time. This is, there have been really no town farm issues that have been coming up recently, so we'd have to, I'd have to look back at the contract. Would it be able to speak to that question, Frank?
What we're looking for is kind of a master plan for the four acres.
Yeah, and I don't know how much the planning board...
We hadn't moved there, because within the purchase and sale agreement, if Polte can't fit twenty, if, if within the zoning, they can't get twenty-three homes within the, how many acres is it, twenty?
I forget.
Thirty acres.
Thirty acres.
Thirty acres. Then they can use part of the four acres to make up the difference.
And that, what Tom just said, that's the reason, because occasionally we get a question from someone, why don't we have a plan already for the four acres? Because we don't really move the bounds out. The four acres may change a little bit based on what the development proposal is. So that's why we haven't, we've kind of let that sit on the advice of town council. We haven't really done anything with that, because this really needed to play out and go to the planning board. So maybe, given the issues that Mr. Blute's raising, maybe we need to be thinking about it sooner rather than later.
Well, for me as a neighbor, I want like a master plan, the whole thing, like, you know, with the Polte end of it and the four acres. I want to know what's going in there, I want to know how it's getting done. I want it done now, like, you know, I don't want it done piecemeal over the next ten years. I've been living there for nine years, like, you know.
Yeah, well, I can tell you it won't. I mean, once it, once it goes to, once Polte brings it forward to the planning board, that's when all the public hearings will start on that thing and that's when all the plans will be absolutely publicly public. We haven't seen any more than you've seen at this point in terms of plans.
Who's putting together a master plan then for the rest of the four acres?
The other four acres are with the trustees.
He's moving in, looking to do the affordable end of his development. I'm part of this, right?
Correct.
He's moving the pest house, right? Which is only rentable property up there and not producing any income. It's going to move it and it's not going to be livable at that point, right?
No, would it? It would still be livable.
Yeah, I think there are...
It says you can take it for the foundation.
And bring the utilities to it.
So you're going to renovate it and...
No, renovated, it's not renovated now. It will stay exactly as it is, it'll just be in a different location. That's the thought concept anyway.
So it won't be any better, I mean, or any worse, I guess, it would be, you know?
I think your issue of the fluidity of the boundaries of the four acres prevents us from getting into a master plan for that site at this time. It goes back to the issues that until the houses that are on the, on the southern side of this road are identified and until the buffer zone issue is addressed, we can't talk about the four acres as where it is, what it looks like. Because there's the potential that you took some of the four acres to create something in here, which means they need to squeeze back up here. So we still, first things first, can they get the access into the property? Yes, that's what they need. So they have to deal with the MEPA part, they have to deal with the DCR part, they have to be able to deal with the Concom part. Can this road go here? Okay, from, I guess it's, from right after the rock coming in, that'll be the next part. Once it's in, then they can identify where the houses would go. At that point, they may be ready to talk to the planning board, because now, now they know that the next issue is going to be that buffer zone. And whatever that language is, whatever, whoever accepts that, however that's accepted, that's the issue that comes up as soon as the road is placed. They're trying to address some of the other issues of, look, the pest house has to be moved. If we put it here, we have to move it anyways. They're asking ahead of time, do you want to move it? Do you want to raise it? You want to move it? We'll figure out where it goes later. But in the meantime, that's just one more item that they have to check off. The men's house, they have to come up with two units, they're thinking, you know, historic preservation as much as you are. They're saying, fine, we'll restore your building, we'll give you the two units, you do with them what you want. We have answered one of the requirements that's in the cluster zoning, which is affordable units. And there's some historic preservation, they get the historic tax credit for it. Okay, you get the building, you get it for perpetuity, you get to, you know, sell it, rent it, do whatever you want, put whoever you want in there. But again, now we're coming up to the boundary. Where is the boundary? Until it goes before the planning board, we don't know. How do you do a master plan of four acres when you don't know what the four acres really contain? I'm getting things now, could we take and do farming on the four acres? I don't know. I don't know what the four acres are going to contain, because I don't know what they're going to look like.
So can I make a suggestion? I think I agree with you, Tom, that the issue on the Unquity Road is the one we can issue, address most easily. And if that, if that issue, just straight, here's what the contract says in a letter to DCR, if that will then let you go in and start doing your soil testing and your environment and have the Concom walk through and have them, I'm not even sure what the name of their process is, but go through the Concom process, there has to be some approval given there by the Concom?
They're looking for an amendment to the abbreviated resource delineation.
Okay, so that, and that would take place if the DCR understands that this is the only entrance into the site? Then, if that environmental process, the Concom can all take part. The first two questions are the harder ones to answer. I think that's when, then you really need to go back to the planning board with some kind of a conceptual plan to, because if the buffer zone issue is still open, that really affects the four acres. I don't see how we can come up with a master plan for these properties. I mean, one school of that says, well, yeah, putting affordable units into the Men's Arms House and doing a development that would either be all affordable units or have some market units in there is one thing. There's another school of that that says maybe the whole thing should be developed on a market basis and funds from the proceeds could be used for affordable housing. So there's different theories and different views that people have, and I don't think, we've never really had, as trustees, had a discussion about that.
Has there ever been thoughts of negotiating the four acres with Polte to benefit the trust?
Well, yeah, because one of Polte's, they came in with three options and one was for the entire, which the trustees rejected at that point and opted to. Another one was to, that I believe that Polte would take control of the four acres, bring habitat in and put some houses in. And then this one, it was the third one, where they just turn over the four acres to the, or just leave the four acres to the trustees. So that's the one that was selected.
I mean, obviously, the pest house has some historical value. We would like to save the pest house, rather than just have it raised, but does it fit right in that section that you identified, Mr. Blute? I don't know. I think that depends on what's the design or what's the plan for the whole four acres and where the four acre line is going to be drawn, as Bill says.
On the other side of the main Arms House, too.
So that's probably all we could do, and I don't know even when, but would be to talk conceptually until we really have some, you know, we can just talk conceptually and that'll be in an open meeting and anybody can come to it in terms of what are the possibilities for whatever four acres we wind up with, you know, and do we want to, do we want to preserve the structures around there? If we do want to preserve them, you know, how much do we want to spend to preserve them? You know, we can have those conversations without exactly knowing where they're going to be, but...
But I'm not sure it makes sense to have those conversations until we know where the planning boards going with this. Because it may all be for naught if we run into all kinds of roadblocks at the planning board. So I think there has to be at least some conceptual meeting. The last one was, what, oh, probably well over a year ago, before the project came back to us. I think, I think I'm remembering that it was before the planning board and then the buffer issue came up, so it's been a long time since it's been to the planning board. And really, months ago, our expectation was that the next step for this is the planning board.
So it would be advantageous to do that.
Yes.
And for us to look to try to seek some relief here on Unquity.
And for us to look to, try to seek some, some relief here on Unquity through the DCR.
I think that Polte, Polte can only go to the planning board if they kind of know that they have a...
If they've gone through the Concom process?
The Concom, and, and they know where the road's going to be, you know. Otherwise, you can't design something.
But that's what the Concom process will feed into.
They're already going through the Concom process. They're going February 6th at 9:00 to 10 o'clock, they'll be doing the sidewalk out to...
I mean, has the Concom already been out here on the road? I mean, that was staked out, we walked with them.
Yeah, they've walked it several times.
So, this is just a stormwater...
It's a formality.
How do they, how do they take and access the, the two western sites? That's all they're looking at. They're not worried about, they're not worried about these, these, they're not concerned about this one, they're only concerned about the bottom two, and they've come back and said, you know, we might not do both of them.
Okay, but so that's what determines maybe where the road goes, and that's the, that's the DCR issue.
The DCR issue is a curb cut, basically.
Yeah.
DCR is curb cut and access across the greenway. Concom one is access with that machine in the buffer zone. State, state regulations say that they can go do these test pits now, and they don't need to ask the Concom. Our local bylaw is stricter than the state regulations, and we have an isolated land subject to flooding, which we call a wetland, which the state would say is a non-jurisdictional piece. Because of it, Polte went back to the Concom, said, "Look, this is where we want to go. We understand your bylaw is strict, and we understand that this isolated land subject to flooding is under your jurisdiction, and that's where we're going. We're going in the buffer to that isolated land." They're not going in it, they're going near it, and that's why they asked. They only asked because of our local bylaw, they're not asking for, is the state issue.
Okay. One last question, and then we'll be on the schedule. When do you foresee this getting done, or what are your intentions on this?
Well, my, our intentions are to file with the planning board as soon as we can. So, at this point, with the delay in the testing, it feels to me like it won't be in February, it will most likely be in March, and that presumes that the intersection will be on Unquity Road, pest house will be moved, and I get some direction on the affordable units. That all has to be part of the presentation because that's, that's the application, has to touch all of these boxes in the zoning, so I have to, my application has to answer those questions, and so...
Yep.
Paligway, it doesn't have to be every little question answered, unlike maybe where the pest house is going to sit, but if we just say, yes, we agreed to move it, and it's probable to stay on site, but we haven't figured a location, whether it's left of the arms house, right of the arms house, the other side of the driveway. I don't think that's a deal killer or a stopper. I think we can proceed with that as part of the presentation, part of the application, but we need to have the reasonable, a kind of expectation that the access will be on Unquity Road, approximately where we've located it, because of the tree cutting is very specific, the location of the test pits to handle the stormwater drainage that has to be retained before it hits the Unquity pavement is very specific, and then there's site distances on the road, which we've identified with the traffic engineer and the surveyors, so the location is where it's shown on this little sketch, that's where it works. Other, if you move it, it infringes on other issues, be it wellens, be it more tree cutting, be it less site distance than is recommended, so there's a, so that's the location. We looked at all the options, and that's it.
Sightlines for that are really, really hard.
Gotcha.
One way you're coming, you're, you just come around a bend, the other one, you're looking to go out of, you just come from the bend, you're now going in, and there's a road on the right, so you're going to see those cars, so that way it's good. But coming from the skating rink and going towards Oatons, that one's a little tough on this. That's why they need to have a bigger area cleared of trees so that they can see the road. You need to be able to see it coming if you're driving on Unquity Road, but at the same time, I'm coming out of this road, I need to see those cars.
Right.
So, it's not just, we'll put the road in and bring it down, they, they need the sightline, so they have to, this fan that they're creating.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome, Frank.
Don't get a copy.
Tom, how do you, do you want maybe a motion to authorize you as the chair and the planning director to work with town council on drafting a letter to the DCR regarding the Unquity Road?
Yes, yeah, that's...
All right, so I'll move that we authorize the chair of the, of the trustees and the planning director to work with town council to draft a letter to the DCR regarding the Unquity Road access to the site.
And I'll second that.
Okay, motion made, seconded, and further discussion. See, now all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and, and the rest of it, I think, we'll just take under advisement and, and with a promise to try and at least have some discussions to give Polte, if we can't give them something definitive, just to give them something.
Sure.
Can we include the historical commission chair, at least, in the...
Yes, absolutely.
If I, that person?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think...
And the neighborhood representatives, I mean, I don't...
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
They should have a voice in any of this.
I mean, there'll be public meetings, so they...
Yeah.
They come in.
Okay.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ray.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
It goes without saying, if you have questions after the meeting, you know, I'm available through however you...
Okay.
Through Bill or...
Okay, great, appreciate that.
Or process you'd like to use.
Which one, the map?
Okay, at this juncture, I would propose a motion to adjourn the meeting of the trustees.
I don't...
So, moved.
Yes, I do.
And return to the board of selectmen meeting for the purpose of entering into executive session.
So moved.
And, actually, do we have an executive session?
Yes.
Okay, so, yeah, let's get, finish with this one first. So, do you have a second on that?
Second.
Second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, I will propose a motion to enter into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to non-union personnel. Believe that having such discussion in open session would have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the board, and return to open session for the purpose of adjournment.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Carmichael?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.